Good evening, citizens, council and staff. Welcome to the regular session of the Littleton City Council for December 15, 2015. Clerk Kefner, can you call the roll?
Mayor Beckman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Brinkwin?
Here.
Councilmember Serenanic?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Hopping?
Here.
Councilmember Valdez?
Present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We've got several different things going on tonight, and I want to just talk about them for a moment to give people who are not that familiar with how we conduct business in the council a comfort level with what we're doing. We have the next item on the -- well, I'm going to prove the agenda in a minute, but I want to talk about this so that everybody has an opportunity to work with it. After we prove the agenda, we go into public comment. We do two public comments so that those folks who would like to talk specifically to items which are in the first part of the agenda, which is primarily the consent, they have an opportunity to get their voices heard before that's acted on. And then we have a second time later in the agenda for just general business or general items where people can talk at that time. And we do that just to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak and that if we have a lot of folks who want to speak, we kind of break it up so that the ones who are real interested in items on the consent get the chance to do that. So those are the sign-ups. I already have the first one, which is the public comment, the first one that we will do, and I have some names on that. There is another green one up there, which would be the second opportunity to speak a little later in the agenda. And then we're also doing quite a few public hearings tonight. So the public has an opportunity to speak to any item which requires the public hearing, and there's a sign-up list by each of those up there also. Now, I know in talking to the clerk that a number of people have signed up to speak, and they picked the one that was for the item seven -- or item 6C. And that's fine. We'll figure it all out when we get there, don't worry. And I'll make sure I ask for any additional folks who would like to talk at that time. So we'll get through all that. We have an agenda. It's been posted and presented to city council. Are there any changes or additions? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move to public comment. This is the first public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings. There will be two opportunities for public comment at the beginning of the meeting regarding consent agenda and general business items and later in the meeting before the council reports. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during either of the public comment sessions, please sign the green sign-up sheets, the first public comment sheet, or the second comment sheet. And I have the first one here. They're located on the table in the entrance to the rear, so are the ones for the public hearings. We expect comments to be civil, and disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. We have a three-minute time limit on that, and the way that -- I don't get to see what's up front here. I can't see those. So I work with a clerk, and the clerk's going to hold up when you're 30 seconds remaining a yellow card and when your time is up a red time, but I'll be the one that tells you if appropriate, you have about 30 seconds left or that your time is up. We have two folks who would like to sign up for the first public hearing. First one is Jeannie Erickson. Would you please come forward to the podium, speak directly into the microphone, and please state your name and address?
Good evening, council. My name is Jeannie Erickson. I live in District One. I'm here to speak on a few different items tonight. The first one is Resolution 81-2015 regarding moving money from impact fees to build a fire station in Trailmark. It is illegal to use impact fees for a deficiency that already exists, and that is exactly what you are voting on tonight in this resolution. This deficiency has existed since Trailmark was built. If it is determined a fire station is needed in Trailmark, then study sessions should be done in public view so we can see why this is needed and what the best way is to mitigate the issues of fire and emergency medical services in this area. The city manager has discussed -- says this discussion has been going on for a year. The citizens have only heard about this in the last two months. If this is so, then why wasn't the fire station put in the 2016 budget? And if it has been going on for a year, then discussions have been happening behind closed doors. I urge you to vote against this so that study sessions can be done and citizens can see what is going on regarding this fire station. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. The next speaker is Carol Briesack.
I'm Carol Briesack, and I live in the Fourth District. I'm addressing your consent agenda item E on impact fees. I'm reading from your City of Littleton ordinance that was passed in 2013 that says there has to be an essential nexus between the capital facility impact fee imposed and the mitigation of specific adverse impacts associated with new development. There must be a rough proportionality between the capital facility impact fee exact -- exaction and the impacts of the new development. You had some whereas statements that preceded your ordinance, and some of the verbiage before you get into the meat of the ordinance, you said that the impact fees are going to be imposed to defray the impact of a directly related development. And you also said that you intend that the capital facility impact fee collected will be used to fund expenditures for capital facilities attributable to the new development. The state law says no impact fee or other similar development charge shall be imposed to remedy any deficiency in capital facilities that exists without regard to the proposed This is a statement that came from our city manager. You cannot use impact fees for existing system deficiencies. The fact that the municipality does not maintain their system to an adequate level does not mean you can charge the new development for making that up. I read all of those to you because Trailmark is not a new development. Littleton Village is, Littleton Commons is, several other meadows at Platte Canyon, I'm sure they've been charged impact fees, but those impact fees are being charged to mitigate the circumstances that those developments create in the area where they live. So I want somebody in your discussion tonight to connect the dots for me. I think it's the least you can do, and if you don't, what you do is undermine your credibility and you -- I want to trust my council, so I need some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. That completes the names that I had signed up for the first public comment session. We will have again a second public comment session later, an opportunity during the agenda after the consent agenda items. Item number five are the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items may be adopted by a single motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to their vote on the motion. Any consent item -- agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A, Consent Agenda Item 5A is an ordinance on first reading to designate 5736 South Bemis Street as a historic landmark, scheduling the public hearing for January 5, 2016 at Consent Agenda 5B is a resolution to approve a contract with the state of Colorado to fund a historic building survey for the Littleton Boulevard corridor. Consent Agenda Item 5C is a resolution to authorize an agreement regarding final design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Littleton's -- for Little's Creek at Gallup Street between the city and urban drainage and flood control district. Consent Agenda Item 5D is a resolution to approve an interfund loan of $725,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Transportation Impact Fee Fund for the East Dry Creek and South Broadway transportation improvements. Pull that, please. Consent Agenda Item 5E is a resolution to approve an $893,000 interfund loan from the Capital Projects Fund to the Facilities, Police, and Fire Impact Fee Funds for the Station 19 construction project. Pull that, please. Consent Agenda Item 5F is a resolution to affirm the City of Littleton Three Mile Plan. Consent Agenda Item 5G is ID number 338, approving the certification of the December 1, 2015 minutes. Consent Agenda Item 5H is ID number 338, approving the certification of the December 8, 2015 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of consent agenda items A through C and F through H.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Jerry and Phil, you need to hit yours.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, we're going back to the two items that were pulled by council member Clark. The first one is Consent Agenda Item 5D. Councilmember Clark.
Can you explain why the cost has gone up, please?
Good evening, council. Mark Ralph, Public Works Director. As I've kind of looked back at the original estimate that was done for Littleton Village and our share specifically, and what we see today, the real difference is what we've encountered in the field, and specifically the subgrade underneath Dry Creek. It's not as stable as originally anticipated, so we had to over X and actually mix in a lime-treated base in order to stabilize that. It was more cost-effective than actually increasing the asphalt, so even though we see kind of a cost increase here, this is probably mitigated here by the strategy that we took in this particular instance. There are other issues related to the cost increase, but it's largely due to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we table 5D to general business, which would be after we approve or disapprove
Do I have a second? And actually, it would fall within my authority to move that as the presider because we don't vote on the agenda. I can move that. Question?
Mayor, you've got a motion that you've got to finish first.
Okay.
You need a motion on your first.
So I have no second.
So that dies.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution approving an interfund loan of $725,000 between the Capital Projects Fund and Transportation Impact Fee Fund for the East Dry Creek and South Broadway transportation improvement, subject to and contingent upon adoption of Ordinance 101-2015 appropriating funds for such transportation improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
The vote is six in favor with council member Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Next item is Consent Agenda Item 5E, which was pulled by council member Clark. Councilmember Clark.
I'm having a hard time understanding how we can use impact fees for the fire station when Trailmark was completely built out before we imposed the impact fees. The resolution that's in front of us says the third whereas says that these impact fees are being used to fund expenditures for new capital facilities attributable to new development. Fire station at Trailmark clearly is not attributable to new development. That's been an issue ever since Trailmark has been built. I think some public commenters commented on our ordinance and the state statutes. The ordinance that we passed for impact fees says the capital facility impact fee system must respect -- we respect a broad equal protection concept to ensure that there is an essential nexus between the capital facility impact fee imposed and the mitigation of specific adverse impacts associated with the new development. Unless we're intending to collect these impact fees in Trailmark, there is no essential nexus between a fire station and a development that's in a separate county at least five miles away from where the closest impact fee would be collected. Furthermore, the ordinance says the city council intends that the capital facility impact fees collected pursuant to this chapter are to be used to fund expenditures for capital facilities attributable to new development. Once again, Trailmark was completely built out long before the impact fees were imposed. And finally, the state statute, I believe somebody read it, but says no impact fee or other similar development charge shall be imposed to remedy any deficiency in capital facilities that exists without regard to the proposed development. Once again, that means unless we're collecting the impact fees or intending to collect impact fees in development in Trailmark, and that would be far-fetched, then this capital project does not have any relation to the proposed development that is paying the impact fee. It's pretty clearly illegal for us, according to our own ordinance, creating the impact fee, according to state law, to use the impact fees, and furthermore, the resolution that's in front of us isn't true.
Councilmember Serenanic.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we move 5E to general business. That way, it'll occur after the consideration of the station out on Wadsworth and would -- my expectation is there will be some illustrative comments that may come to light during that conversation that would help us with this.
I think I'm agreeing with what you're saying. We have a lot of public hearing and a lot of discussion that's going to occur later in the meeting, and that's an opportunity where I think these questions can be addressed and talked to. So I'm going to go ahead and take Consent Agenda Item 5E, which is a resolution to approve an $893,000 interfund loan from the Capital Projects Fund to the Facilities, Police, Fire Impact Fees Fund for Station 19 construction project, and move that over to general business, and that would be item 7A. And I guess I'm allowed to do that as the person who puts the agenda together, so we'll get those -- we'll get answers to those issues that council member Clark has raised during the testimony, during the ordinances, and we can specifically ask for clarification Okay, this brings us to six ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Each of these is going to require the ordinance to be read and the opportunity further to be a public hearing. So these -- if -- so for members of the audience, if this is where you need to pay attention if you had signed up for this, I'll also be getting the sign-up sheets. Ordinance number 108 on second reading to approve a lease purchase agreement between the City of Littleton and Motorola Solutions Incorporated for radio equipment. Finance Director Doug Farman, you have some staff information, please.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council. This item was discussed with the city council during the 2016 budget meetings. Council approved this policy question for funding the $2.3 million project, which is a lease purchase. The fire districts that we have contracts with with the city have also approved this project and will be utilizing the lease purchase method and contributing in reimbursement of the costs. The city's police, fire, and public works currently use radio technology, which will be at the end of life at the end of 2017, so the parts, repairs, support for these pieces of radio system will not be able to be obtained. A couple of footnotes about the cost. The recent negotiations that the police department has had with Motorola has come up with a reduced cost, which will be roughly $2.1 million and not the $2.3, which was the early estimates and which is in the budget for 2016. They have also applied for 911 funding of $75,000, which could defray the costs even further. The proposed ordinance approves this lease purchase agreement with Motorola Systems to provide the radio system replacement, and the agreement would be for eight years at 0% financing. If you have any questions, I can answer those this evening.
Does the council have any questions? Councilmember Clark.
It's nice that we've got a $200,000 savings, but that's still three times a 300% increase from what we paid last time seven years ago. That seems excessively high.
Actually, the share -- that was just the police share that was seven years ago, and it was about -- with the financing, it was about $855,000. I think the principal amount was a little over $700,000, but the police share for this go-around will be just a little bit above that amount, so not too much more than what was the purchase price seven years ago.
So when did we purchase the fire -- yeah, the fire radios? That wasn't at the same time, was it?
That was not at the same time. We have the fire personnel here, if they have any historical knowledge of that, when that was purchased. I know Public Works kind of gets the hammy downs when police and fire radios become more useful for Public Works than they are for police and fire, but...
So I guess the question is, was the fire purchased before or after the police?
Seven years ago? About seven years ago, about the same -- roughly the same time period, 2008. I don't have a cost for you on that purchase.
All right. Are there other members -- are there other members who have questions? Director Farman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance on second reading.
Hold on, I've got to do a public hearing.
The public hearing.
Yeah, and I have no one who has signed up to talk at the public hearing. I opened the public hearing at 6:54, and I have no one who wanted to speak on 6A. Close the public hearing again at 6:54 and 30 seconds. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance on second reading, approving a lease purchase agreement between the City of Littleton and Motorola Solutions for radio equipment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Items, Item B is ordinance 101 on second reading to amend ordinance number 38, series of 2014, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015. Finance Director Doug Farman, you have some information for council.
Yes, yes, thank you. This is a cleanup ordinance, which normally is discussed by council at the end of the year to review any unanticipated city expenditures incurred throughout the year. And tonight's proposed ordinance includes increased appropriations to seven different city funds for various different city needs. Some of these items, such as the annual interfund transfer of excess general fund revenues to the Capital Projects Fund are familiar, and we've done that on a regular basis over the past few years. Some of these items have also been reviewed by council throughout the year, such as the project funding for Riverside Downs Open Space Project and the Downtown Streetscape Project, which has gone before council earlier this year for council direction. Staff has submitted details on these unanticipated expenditures, and I can answer any questions about any individual request at this time.
Does city council have any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Farman?
Has the additional $300,000 for the Riverside Downs project already been spent? Is that project complete?
Yes. The city manager is saying yes, it is.
So we spent the money before we appropriated it?
This one did go before council earlier this year as well, and council was informed about the project costs.
But there was no appropriation?
Was not appropriated at that time. We usually do the cleanup at the end of the year.
You know, my impression is, is that expenditures of funds that haven't been appropriated or funds that are spent more than is appropriated is actually illegal. And if we spent the funds for this before we appropriated it, we don't have an obligation to pay for the amount more than is appropriated, which obviously puts us in a bad reputation with contractors. So whoever the contracting officer is that spent this money, who was the contracting officer on this project that amended the contract?
I know Deputy City Manager Mike Broden was a project manager at this, and went to council earlier this year.
I thank you. I've got a question about the Streetscape project. We are having an appropriation for a Streetscape project. It looks like it's completely changed from what was presented to council. Some of the activities in the proposed contract can't be done within the timeframe of the contract. So we're approving an appropriation for Streetscape contract that includes a whole bunch of things like where the trees should be located, where the downtown furniture, what it should be, but it's a parking study. And part of the parking study is supposed to study parking demand in downtown Littleton on the Thursday and Friday before Christmas, which we're too late to do, and then do another study in January, and then compare the two. So I know you're not the Streetscape person.
We can let Jocelyn Mills, Community Development Director, answer those questions if you
Good evening, council. Jocelyn Mills, Community Development Director.
You want to explain how we can, how this contract is actually going to get actioned?
As far as the...
If it's approved tonight, if the budget amendment is approved tonight, the appropriation doesn't take effect until next Wednesday, seven days after publication. Christmas is, what, Thursday of next week, Friday of next week? So we can't get a traffic study of the shopping downtown on the Thursday and Friday before Christmas. So we're already too late for that. So we're being asked to approve an appropriation for a contract where at least part of it
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
So we can certainly, the idea is to do the first part of the project as a whole is several components, including a parking inventory. And the idea is to get a first count around the holiday season. So if it doesn't happen to be exactly those dates, but perhaps shortly thereafter, it still gets us started on the project.
So, so basically, the parking study won't happen as it's defined in the contract?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Both of those instances, the Riverside Downs, that was brought to council. The contractor and the staff liaison, Deputy City Manager Broden, brought those into council. We had a discussion about it, and council approved that. And the Streetscape, that's actually Jerry Valdez and I were designated the council liaisons to that committee and have since met with the Community Development Director and the city manager regarding that contract. There are incredible improvements made on that contract, and the council did appropriate the money at the time that we talked about the Streetscape plan because we had to bring in what that budget would be. So I'm comfortable with both of these, in so much as council was aware of them. Both of the plans have, are actually in better shape than they were when we initially approved them. So I'm comfortable that we were well aware of it, and we've always, every year, I've sat up here for eight years, there's been the end-of-year cleanup with this. And that's basically what this is also, just kind of putting it into the formal spreadsheet for the auditors.
Councilmember Valdez?
I was a part of the little review committee on that, that we had on that. We did approve for Civitas, and then the new contractor came up, I think it was last Tuesday, I think it was. I'm okay with the new contractor, but it isn't one that we actually reviewed and had time to approve like we did the other ones. The other part is, too, that I'm not real comfortable with is we do mention Littleton Boulevard and stuff. This has very little to do with Littleton Boulevard, and we talked about that in our meeting. As I, it's more about Main Street again, with hopefully some stuff will flow up to Littleton Boulevard. So it's, it's, again, it's a little bit iffy, and, but I'm willing to go with this contractor based on what we heard from the city.
Any other comments from council? This is a public hearing. This is Item 6B, if that was one that you wanted to speak on. I opened the public hearing at 7:04. I have one person's name on the list, Lou Sullivan. Would you like to speak? Lou Sullivan would not like to speak, but she does not favor the project. Close the hearing at 7:04. Okay, I wish you had signed so I can manage it, but come on up, Pam.
Good evening, council. So I live a block and a half from Main Street, or a couple of blocks from Main Street. My name is Pam Chapron, and I do live a block and a half from here. I have not heard enough about this new plan for you to approve it. Neither have all of my neighbors. We're certainly impacted by these Streetscape changes. I've read what community development has put out, and even though it talks about community outreach, there is nothing specifically for those of us who live there. And I'm going to guarantee, if this happened in any one of your neighborhoods, you would expect to be informed by the city of what the city's plans were going to be, of the... And you would want to be consulted and be part of the advisory committees informing the study. In the past three years or so, there have been several interesting committees set up. They were picked without public view, the people who served on them. Now, I'd like to be sure that there is some kind of neighborhood committee picked from the neighborhood, and not the people who approved the R5 rezoning and the, and the central area rezoning, but just regular people who live down there, people who need the housing that's down there. And that is nowhere in what has been presented. So I'm not seeing council, I am not seeing you represent the community and the neighborhood in this Streetscape plan. However, I am not comfortable in letting this flow upward to Littleton Boulevard. I am not comfortable in giving this administration and this council the ability to flow into Littleton Boulevard without specifics. So I'm going to ask you to disapprove this. This is not the right thing to do. It is not the right thing for my neighborhood, I can guarantee you. And I want you to change it so that there is inclusion of our neighborhood, the people who live there, the people who are impacted by the traffic changes and lighting changes and everything else, and assure that we are engaged and involved, not hand-pick people behind the scenes who are going to be picked and told that they can give input on this. I don't have trust, for good reason. And so I ask you to disapprove this.
Thank you, Pam. And with that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:07. Does council have any additional questions? Councilmember Brinkman?
One of the reasons that we changed the contractor in this particular project is because of the community outreach aspect. The new contractor has a much more dynamic plan, and the Community Development Director made a decision that the involvement of the community, quite obviously, is what's key and important here. And because of the new contractor's commitment to that and their plans for it, that change was made. So contractor was fired, and contractor was hired based on largely the fact that their qualifications in terms of their ability to do powerful community outreach and draw the community into this decision-making. So I think the $200,000 is an appropriation to start the planning, which the community outreach is part of.
Councilmember Serenick?
Director Mills question for you, or two questions, actually. The appropriation is allowing for the project to commence, and Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman mentioned that the community outreach will be beefed up and is yet somewhat to happen, so some additional will happen. And Councilmember Valdez also mentioned some extension to Littleton Boulevard that does not seem to be as specific in this particular resolution. Knowing that we're looking at the annual appropriation bill, could you address those two items, just to say they're yet to occur or are part of the project plan?
Certainly, yes. So the project will get underway. The first part that Councilman Clark was referencing is more of the research and fact-finding for the project to get started and to do an actual inventory of parking. So that's, that's that part. But the actual public engagement in the project and the dialogue with the community stakeholders, both businesses and community-wide, that will get underway starting in early January of next year. So we haven't launched any of that yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoppin?
Okay. I would like to address the comment about community outreach, because the memo that we have from Community Development indicates under scope of project, the goals of the Streetscape project are to partner with stakeholders and community members. And then it further talks about through a variety of workshops, field walks, and community dialogues, the project will be conducted. That sounds very much to me like very effective community outreach, so I'm very comfortable that'll occur.
Councilmember Serenick?
Mr. Chairman, are you interested in a motion?
May I have a motion?
And I'll make a motion, and then we'll have a comment as well. I move to approve on second reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 38, series of 2014, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional conversation?
Yeah, I just want to make one, one comment. This has been our standard operating, standard operating procedure for a number of years. The actual number, I'm not entirely sure of, but this is to essentially clean up our fiscal statement that has previously been reviewed by our auditors. What I'd like Director Farman to possibly do is put a question to our auditors as to the process that we've been using, just to clear that up, to make sure that we're working in an okay procedure as far as what we're doing with regard expenditures and appropriations. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Yes, I'll be voting against this for a number of different reasons. I don't think it's appropriate for us to violate state law and spend money that hasn't been appropriated, regardless of whether that's been the council's custom for the last few years. This $200,000 for the Streetscape was brought to us two weeks ago, and at that time, it was characterized as an appropriation for a decision the council had made in June in a study session. That June study session was where it was presented to the council that the council subcommittee had met with Civitas, whittled down the price to $200,000, that they had approved whatever the changes were, and that that was why this appropriation was coming to us. That is what happened at the study session, but the council didn't actually make a decision. After this comes to us on first reading, two weeks ago, we now have a brand-new contract that was done a week after the council approved the first reading. Portions of the contract obviously can't be done, specifically the parts of the parking study, when you're trying to evaluate the high demand. If we're going to mess with downtown, this should include the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning Commission, the HPB spends an incredible amount of time on downtown, and for us to go off unilaterally, be proposing a hodgepodge of studies that range from whether the trees are in the right location downtown and should be moved, to what kind of furniture we have, to a parking study, to a presentation on what a great street is in North America today, is a waste of money and a lack of focus and direction, and it doesn't include, and portions of this that probably are worth doing, doesn't include the other players that we appoint that we task with doing this.
Any additional comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
And a question for the attorney, please. Are we violating any state law that you're aware of concerning the impact fees?
This is, we're amending the appropriation bill based on a project that we brought to council and approved the expenditures for that. This has been your standard practice. I will work with Director Farman and the auditors to make sure that it's in line, but it's been our standard practice, and the project is one that we brought to you and you approved the expenditures for.
So you're not aware of us violating any state statutes?
We do need to appropriate the funds, and that's why we're bringing it to you.
The other part, I, I am still a little uncomfortable with changing our prime contractor. I found out about it last Tuesday before our study session. I would like to maybe delay this so we can find out more information, to make sure that we are comfortable with it. And as Mr. Clark pointed out, this contract is already late, and it's going to miss some of the clauses in there. I would like to amend the main motion, and that would... I would like to amend the main motion, and that would be to move this to a date certain, what is that, January, what is our next meeting?
Fifth. January 5th.
January 5th. I'd like to move the, uh, move this motion to vote to January 5th, so that we have more time to evaluate the, the prime contractor on this, as well as the contract itself with the changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend this for, um, a hearing date to a date certain of January 5th, to amend the current motion, which would have moved this...
It's not, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it wouldn't be a motion to amend, but a motion to table to January 5th.
Okay, motion to table. Okay, so on the floor is a motion to table with a second, to move it to a certain, date certain, January 5th. And we have a motion and a second conversation. Councilmember Serenannick.
Director Farman and City Attorney, uh, we usually take care of this annual appropriation cleanup before the end of the year. What are the implications if we don't address it till 2016?
I have never done it that way. I, I think legally you can retroactively amend the budget for the previous year, um, but otherwise we would have to disclose in our financial statements that the city has gone over budget, budget, and has exceeded appropriations. Which occasionally does happen, because sometimes these amendments come to you in November, and we still have expenditures in November, December, that were not anticipated, but we do try to leave room for those type of expenditures as far as we can. I think, I think that you could, still could legally, retroactively amend the budget.
Good. Okay, um, legally, but what are the other implications, if any?
Just that you would have to disclose that in the financial statements, which could leave, um, you know, criticism for any type of ratings, rating agencies looking at those type, type of documents, which could affect the city's bond rating in the future.
I have a comment. Is it, uh, so I'm going to ask the process, is it possible to table this one section of appropriations, uh, without having that implication and address that on January 5th, but otherwise deal with the appropriations, making an amendment to the first rather than just tabling?
Is this specifically addressing the Streetscape study?
I think that's Councilmember Valdez's concern.
Okay, yes, I, I think that could be done, yes.
Along that same line, if, if that is Councilmember Valdez's intention, then perhaps the better thing to do would be to amend this ordinance to take out the $200,000 from the 2015 budget, because you're not going to spend it in 2015 anyway. Have your study session in January, and if the council decides to do that, then amend the 2016 budget to put it in. Because just, at this late point in time, it's obviously not, you've already missed the Christmas season for the parking study, there's no point in having the money in the 2015 budget, and I'm uncomfortable, I'm going to vote against it, but I'm uncomfortable with the council doing retroactive budget amendments for appropriations after the year closes, or after the calendar year closes.
I think if that's council's desire, then definitely, if it was a 2016 project, then you could amend the 2016 budget to cover that project.
Do we have a contract, uh, well, this is a question for Director Mills, do we have a contracting issue if we take that up at January 5th rather than tonight?
No contracting issue.
Thank you.
Okay, just, just to summarize where we're at, then, we still have a, a motion to table this to January 5th with a second, and that's the motion that we're discussing. Once, I think we will have to vote on that, and then, here again, the motion to perhaps pull part of it out...
To amend.
To amend it. And that's why I understand where we are at this point. Councilmember Valdez.
I'd like to go ahead and pull, pull the motion to amend...
Yeah, you can withdraw the motion.
My second is okay with that, but I would like to make a new motion, then, to pull the, the Streetscape out of this...
$200,000.
Uh, to, this item, the 200K out of this item, and move it to, uh, early next year.
Second.
So you have pulled the motion that was, uh, to table it, and, and we had a friendly second, and that was approved, so that is now off the table.
Who was the second, I'm sorry? Thank you.
On, on the new motion, was Phil.
And, and, Phil, okay. And who was the second on the initial?
Peggy.
Peggy, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So now we have a motion to remove the $200,000 appropriation for the Streetscape plan from, from this ordinance, and move it to, and then, I don't know if we have a date certain or a future date?
Don't have to.
Okay, to a future, to a future date. Okay, and have we got the motion correctly? So in order to do that, did we have a second?
Phil.
Phil's the second. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on the motion that's on the floor?
Which removes the $200,000 Streetscape...
Which will remove the $200,000.
From the 2015.
From the 2015, and let me just get a clarification, do we need to go back, though, to move, to approve the remaining part of the ordinance?
After this is...
After this, okay, very good. Ready to vote?
Ready.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
So now that brings us back to the ordinance which was on the floor, which is ordinance 101 on second reading, to amend number 38, series of 2014, known as the annual appropriation bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015, 2015.
As amended.
As, as we just amended it. Do I have a motion?
No, you have a motion.
I have the motion.
We just need to vote.
And I have the second. Okay, we're ready for a vote.
The vote is six in favor, with Councilmember Clark voting no, the motion carries six to one.
Running out of room here. This is going to take us up to item C, and items C, D, and E are all, are all discussing the, the fire station at Trailmark. There are different parts of that discussion. I have three sheets with requests to speak to items C, D, and E, and we can take those in order, but I would, I would ask the fire chief to make as solid a presentation at this point that would answer many of the questions for the other two, if you could. So let me get where I read it.
Help Doug, you need the screen.
We're good. There it goes.
Okay.
So, good evening, council.
Let me read, let me go ahead and get it on the record, though. Ordinance number 110 is a second reading to approve an agreement with Lockheed Martin Corporation for Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services. Chief Armstrong.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight I have a presentation for you. As you said, I hope we'll answer several questions, I'm sure there'll be some. Uh, I would respectfully request it, if you would just allow me to get through the presentation. I think it's extremely comprehensive, it may answer several questions that you may have, uh, leading up to the end. I'm certain that you'll have some additional questions for me, um, when I conclude. Um, this proposal is, is really, we're here to ask one simple question of council, and that's, do you support a fire station, 19, in the southwest area of the city, uh, for a cost of $2.6 million? Back in 2014, Littleton Fire Rescue and our fire partners hired Emergency Services Consulting, Inc., um, to develop a long-term emergency services master plan. The scope of the work included a standard to cover, um, as well as a strategic plan and a long-term emergency services master plan. ESCI, our consultant, spent eight months conducting a comprehensive analysis of the communities we serve, the risks that are associated with the communities we serve, the resources we have available to provide those services, along with department activities, functions, our workload, and performance. The master plan process continued with a review of our future growth and expected future service demands, uh, and based on those projections. The report culminated with nine recommendations for increasing our service capacity and improving emergency responses, including the need for two future fire stations. So the master plan was completed in March of 2015, and shortly after, we were approached by Lockheed Martin to explore the possibility of providing fire and EMS services to the Waterton campus. This could only be accomplished, um, through the station that was recommended in the study in the southwestern corridor of our service area. The request provided us with an opportunity to partner with Lockheed and possibly reduce the operating costs of the station. In this map, it identifies the location of the recommended stations. You can see in red, we have Station 11, and my mouse is a little hard to see, so I apologize, up here in the northern section of the city of Littleton, Station 12, which sits right on the border of Littleton and the Littleton Fire Protection District, Station 14 and 15, which are located in the eastern side of the Little Fire, Littleton Fire Protection District, Highlands Ranch Station 17 and 18 to the south, Station 16, which sits on, uh, the border of all three fire partners' districts, and Station 13 on the, on the western edge. The two stations that were recommended were down in our southwestern corridor, down near Trailmark, and in the southern corridor of Highlands Ranch. We like to talk about this as being, um, a time when all the stars kind of aligned. When I came here in, uh, 2014, we didn't have a master plan, we didn't have a strategic plan, we did not have any goals and objectives that we were trying to accomplish. One of the real valuable things that we brought back from our strategic planning session with our firefighters was the development of a mission statement, a vision statement, and core values. Our mission statement is simply to serve with pride and honor to protect our community, and we do it through core values like integrity, innovation, creation, creativity, and good communication. When I came here and found out that we were providing these services to this area of our community through another fire department, it bothered me as a fire chief. For 30 years, I've been sworn to protect the communities I serve, and Littleton is no different. We take a lot of pride in the work that we do, and we take a lot of pride in protecting our community and our citizens. This plot of land out near Trailmark Parkway in Wadsworth Boulevard was earmarked and conveyed to the city decades ago for the purpose of a future fire station. So when Lockheed Martin came to us and said, hey, we want you to provide service, the only way we could do it is through the, put the possibility of a station in this location. And our master plan identified the need of a station in that location. So we obviously saw some opportunities to create some new partnerships with Lockheed Martin, and find better ways to improve service delivery and capacity to the citizens we The new service demands and population changes outlined in the master plan, I'm going to read to you some excerpts from our master plan. Says, "In preparing the development of future service delivery options, it was necessary to evaluate population history in the response area, and to try to attempt to predict how population changes over the next two decades. These changes in populations will directly impact the service demand of the organization and could stress the organization if not properly resourced and deployed. Evaluating new development is important, as it will generate additional fire department workloads, especially housing. Population is the most significant driver of response workload. The current utilization rate is 63.8 incidents per thousand residents. What that means is for every additional thousand residents in our community, Littleton Fire Rescue can expect to respond to 64 more incidents. Based on forecast population usage rate, LFR can expect to see increases in each incident category over the next two decades. Fire incidents are expected to grow at the slowest rate of 0.3% per year, while medical incidents are expected to grow at 4.4% per year. By 2035, forecasts predict our population to increase to 282,000 in our service area, increasing demand and putting a straining on our existing resources. Other factors within the community that influence service demand, such as demographics, socioeconomics, and housing rates. Those areas with populations within certain, certain age groups tend to produce higher levels of service demand. Based on available census data over the last five years, 16.7% of Littleton Fire Area population falls within the high-risk range of under 5 or over 65. These age groups tend to use emergency services at a higher rate than other age ranges. And overall, the city of Littleton has a higher percentage of residents in these high-risk categories, with 16.1% in the 65 and overage group." We've heard some talk about new development, and Trailmark is not a new development, but new developments are going to continue to increase demand and strain in capacity on our service delivery. Our last station that we built to increase our capacity for service occurred in 1998, 18 years ago. We've seen a tremendous increase in population, we've seen a, a different change in demographics, and an increase in service demand, and we haven't done anything to address it. 18 years is a long time to protect a community with the same amount of resources when those kind of numbers are changing, and they're going to continue to grow and put pressure on our service capabilities. Some quotes from our master plan, "In order to provide acceptable travel coverage to the southwest portion of the city of Littleton, a closer fire station is needed. The choice will be whether to incur additional cost or accept lower costs for service delivered by West Metro at a slower-than-target response time." Just an example of some of the response times for 2015, you can see in the blue column is our average response time to the city of Littleton, eight, eight minutes and 32 seconds. In Highlands Ranch, our response times are nine minutes and 33 seconds. In Littleton Fire Protection District, we're at eight minutes and 47 seconds, and in the western corridor, the service delivery being provided by West Metro is 12 minutes and 53 Another quote from the study is, "Response times to deliver the full effective response force exceed Littleton Fire Rescue's targets by over four minutes in the city of Littleton. Three minutes and 19 seconds in Littleton Fire Protection District, and five minutes in Highlands Ranch Metro District. Automatic and mutual aid resources were also included in this analysis." What that means is, when we don't have enough resources, we call for help. When we call for help, those numbers of the mutual aid resources that were provided to us were included in the study, and we're still not meeting our target times. There we go. The last quote is that, "Over a five-year, uh, data period, Littleton Fire Rescue has seen an overall increase of 16.5% in total service demand. This expects, we expect this to go up as population increases and development continues. The average annual increase in call volume calculates to 3.9%, and based on a forecast population usage rate, we can expect to see increases each year over the next two decades. By 2035, Littleton Fire Rescue should be prepared to respond to over 22,400 calls for service. We're just under 15,000 for this year." So as I said, the stars aligned for us. We completed our master plan, we identified what our mission is, how we're going to carry out our mission. We've had a long history of successful and collaborative partnerships in the past, and we were presented with a unique opportunity to bring on another partner in Little, in Lockheed Martin. When they approached us and asked us if we would be willing to deliver the services, we were certainly interested. We've partnered with them for several years already, providing transport services. We, we respond to their facility on a pretty regular basis already. The Lockheed Martin contract that they've agreed to is a 15-year term to provide fire and EMS services. They're offering $312,000 in a capital investment, plus two fire apparatus valued at $88,000, making their net contribution for capital at $400,000. Additionally, they've agreed to pay $400,000 for the first year of service due to the increased cost of training and equipping new firefighters, with a $300,000 annual appropriation each year for services with a 2% increase. We're talking with the Littleton Fire Protection District about a $500,000 capital investment and a one-third, um, ownership... and a one-third ownership in the station, which is our normal model for them. It's very similar to the model that we currently use at Station 16, where they would come in and pay for 30% or one-third, excuse me, one-third of the annual appropriation of operations and maintenance. So some of the projections. We know that the station's going to cost $2.6 million to build. What we have here is a graph depicting the $312,000 contribution by Lockheed Martin, as well as the $500,000 contribution for Littleton Fire Protection District. We're proposing to use impact fees for the remaining balance needed, just over $1.7 million. $832,000 from facilities, $290,000 from police, $666,000 from fire. The reason that we're proposing the use of impact fees is that the state statute does say that we cannot use impact fees to handle, I forget what the word is now, deficiencies in existing facilities and buildings. We're not doing that. We're building a new building. We're not addressing deficiencies in current buildings. We believe that this station will offset and increase our service capacity throughout our service area, including the areas under new development. And that's why we're proposing that we use the impact fees. The impact fees existing in the fund is $895,000. We are requesting a three-year loan from the Capital Projects Fund at an amount of $893 to give us the total of $1.7 million to complete the construction. The loan would be paid back from future impact fee revenues. The annual operating cost would be split between the three partners. Lockheed Martin contributing $300,000 on an annual basis with a 2% annual increase, Littleton Fire Protection coming in at one-third of the cost, or $500,000, and City of Littleton picking up the difference at $700,000. It should be noted as well that canceling the contract with West Metro would net savings to the city of Littleton in the area of $200,000 that could be used and appropriated towards the operation and maintenance costs, reducing the annual cost to half a million dollars. We're going to see several system improvements. We looked at our data, we ran GIS mapping, we took all of our incidences in 2015 and put them on a map. We identified where they were, who responded to them, and from where, what their travel time was and their response time. And we identified that 30% of the calls that happened in the southwestern corridor would be closer to new Station 19 than it is to the existing stations. In addition, it has, the increased capacity of service will help us improve response time for all of our service areas. It'll expand our partnerships to include Lockheed Martin, and it'll also provide us additional resources available for future growth. What we did was try to depict how some of the movement of our apparatus and our resources currently work. So we took a map with our different response areas, and you can see the jurisdictions with the city of Littleton in the middle in the cream color, Littleton Fire Protection District in the browns, and in the green areas are Highlands Ranch. And you can see that we don't have any coverage. That big brown area on the bottom left-hand side, you have Trailmark sitting off to the side, and you have Chatfield State Park. We run quite a few calls in Chatfield State Park, as you can imagine. It's a very active area, we have dive calls there, medical incidents, biking accidents, you name it, and we get the whole gamut. And we respond from Station 16 or 13, and you can see why we have a response time problem. All of our units, because of the way our stations are situated, are required to respond in a southwestern manner. If we add Station 19 to this map, you can see how Station 19 drives all those units back to the northeast. Well, that's where our population is increasing and our growth is happening. So impact fees are exactly what they're intended for. It's the increased capacity for those areas for the future growth and the population increases. That's why we feel that this is an appropriate measure to take. Lastly, I want to share with you that we feel this project follows and speaks to three of the council's goals. The first one is to assure a financially sound city. The objective in there that we feel that we're meeting is we're delivering innovative, cost-efficient municipal services to all of our citizens. We've researched and pursued alternative revenue sources for this project. Goal two is to provide a safe community to live, work, and play. We're meeting the objective of providing a comprehensive evaluation of services that meet the needs of our community. We're providing fire protection and emergency medical services that meet the needs of the community and our fire partners. We're partnering with government and nongovernmental agencies to maximize opportunities to ensure safe communities. And under goal four, preserving and cultivating a quality community, we're meeting the objective of encouraging continuous improvement in our service delivery and evaluating potential So myself and our staff strongly feel that this is an appropriate approach and an appropriate time to take action to ensure that our communities and our residents are ensuring the best possible services we can provide them. We've reached out and created partnerships to defer our costs. I can assure you that there are very few fire departments in our local area that follow the model we're using. It's innovative, it's creative, and again, it provides real good services to our community, which we're dedicated to do. Before I close and give you a summary, I wanted to ask our medical director, Dr. Eby, to come down and talk to you a little bit about the importance of our service delivery and how it pertains with him as our medical director as well.
And Chief, before you close, could you speak to the per capita cost over the years? You can do that afterward, just want to make sure you hit that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for a moment to address some of the humanistic components of this proposal. If you'd indulge me, I'd like to just take you on a brief course of three situations that the fire department's found itself in recently. First situation was a stroke that we ran on not far from here. A patient had a rather devastating stroke and lost function on the left side of the body, had an inability to speak. The stroke was identified correctly. Patient was loaded in the ambulance, taken to the hospital emergently, arrived at the hospital, and within nine minutes, managed to go into the CAT scan, receive a full head CT, which was interpreted by the radiologist, the stroke was identified. And the patient received a clot lysine drug within nine minutes of approaching the door. It made a major impact, and that patient had full recovery. All of the stroke symptoms were fully resolved, and the patient walked out of that hospital. Second case I want to tell you about is one that I was involved with, and patient was brought to my hospital, a heart attack was identified by the paramedics. They brought the patient in emergently, hit our doors, and within 12 minutes, the patient was stripped of their clothing, was taken up to the cath lab, had a cardiac catheterization performed. The catheter was placed, the patient had a catheter threaded up into the heart, dye was injected, a catheter was placed in that, a balloon was opened up, and the clock was stopped. And at that time, the vessel was open and circulation was restored to that patient's heart. That occurred in 12 minutes. That was an incredibly impressive time, but it wasn't nearly as impressive as the fact that that case, we also had a 38-minute dispatch to balloon time. So from the time that our dispatch center picked up that phone call, dispatched the rig, they responded to the house, they picked up the patient, they started treating the patient, they identified the heart attack, they got the patient to the hospital, we got them up to the cath lab, and had that balloon in their heart in 38 minutes. Third case I want to talk to you about is a trauma patient, and this happened in the heart of Highlands Ranch a few months, several months ago, where we had a rather devastating auto pedestrian accident, and an unfortunate patient that had what should have been a lethal injury, had a pelvic injury that was devastating. She was managed impeccably well by the paramedics and was taken into the hospital, and she managed to survive her injuries, and she's going to walk out of the hospital despite having injuries that she not only should not walk from, but she shouldn't have survived. I can bring several surgeons into this room and have them testify to you that the fact that the paramedics made an amazing difference with this call. In fact, it wasn't the paramedics. It was not the trauma surgeons. It was a system that was put in place, and it was no accident. In all three of these cases, the thing that makes the difference is time, and we know that. We understand that. We understand that there's an impact with response times, we understand that there's an impact with the fiscal responsibility and with the unit hour utilization. But what this really boils down to is that we are going to impact lives in a positive way or a negative way. And we are going to impact the outcome of their survival and their ability to walk again, their ability to survive from a heart attack. We've identified that golden hour in trauma, and with heart attacks and strokes, that's cut down to minutes and even seconds. So I encourage you to consider this and to consider that we do need to afford the patients in this district the exact same advantage as it would anywhere. And these Trailmark patients deserve the exact same that the patients sitting in this room would have if they had an incident right now. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Eby.
Thank you, Doctor. So Dr. Eby touched on a really important fact, and it's fiscal responsibility. Talked a little bit about how we've reached out and been intentional about creating partnerships so that we could share the costs associated with providing emergency services to our communities. We recently did an analysis of some of the local departments, and one of the things that we're really proud of is the types of services that our men and women deliver and the cost at which we do it. We broke down, our fire department, a lot of the public doesn't realize, but we provide service to almost 100 square miles, 230,000 residents, receive some of the highest-quality care and emergency response in the country, because we have some of the best-trained men and women out on the streets protecting us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we do it on a very small budget. Per capita, our residents pay $80 a year for the services that they receive. Residents in West Metro pay $170 a year, and the residents in South Metro pay $280 a year. South Metro has a $70 million budget, and they run the same number of calls we run in Littleton. Our men and women are doing the good job. They want to protect their communities, they want to serve their residents. We're asking you to consider approving the tools necessary for us to continue providing that level of service, even when our demographics change, our growth continues and our population increases. So in summary, I think we've done our due diligence, along with an expert consultant, in evaluating the needs of our communities and our capacity to provide on-time emergency responses. We've adopted a comprehensive, long-term strategic plan that not only evaluates our current ability to respond, but also takes proactive steps to ensure that we have an increased capacity to respond to new service demands as we continue development and our population increases. The plan achieves many of the council's goals and objectives, it capitalizes on strong partnerships to ensure fiscal responsibility, and finally, it improves the safety of our communities. And I'll take any questions you have.
Chief, I know we have some questions for you, but we do have two other folks here. Let's give them an opportunity to talk, because they might answer some of the questions, and then we can get back with you, if that's okay. We have two members of Lockheed Martin, we have Joe Rice and Tony Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Joe Rice, Director of Government Relations for Lockheed Martin Space Systems Company. This is Tony Morrow. He is the Site Manager for Plant Protection and Emergency Services. We are here to support this agreement and also to address any questions that we can add from the Lockheed Martin side. Lockheed Martin and the city of Littleton have a long history that goes back to 1956, when the then Glen El Martin Company located at our present location. And in that years, we've had a number of cooperations, a number of different ways of community involvement, and that has just continued to grow. Around 10 years ago, we began doing mutual aid, having a mutual aid agreement with our emergency services department, as well as the Littleton Fire Department, and that has gone very well. And we've reached the point now where we can expand that partnership, where we can expand the capabilities that we're able to provide to the Waterton campus of Lockheed Martin, as well as to the city of Littleton and the Littleton Fire Protection District, as the chief outlined, and I thought is great, very comprehensive and very well-stated presentation. And, most importantly, we can expand those capabilities for both of our entities in a way that neither of us could afford to do separately. And so this is a classic example, I think a great example, and somewhat a new example of public-private partnership. So we already had a great public-private partnership, and this is a way to certainly formalize that and take that to a next level. So with that, Tony, I'll turn it over to Tony, see if he has anything he would like to add, and then we can, are just available for any questions. But thank, we want to certainly thank you for your time, the city staff, and particularly the fire chief and the department for the services that we've already gotten and for the ability to have this conversation, to see how we can improve services for both of us at a lower cost going forward. Tony?
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, council. I guess I'll start off by saying we've had a longstanding relationship with Littleton Fire that dates back far, long before I even was a member of the company. We have a great relationship, we have actually a couple of our former employees were former Littleton firefighters. That's what started the relationship many years ago that continues today. We greatly value the service that they've provided. It's fantastic that they have capabilities we don't have on site. Right now, we have 21 firefighters, we don't have any paramedics, and we've had some serious incidents out at the campus that have required transport, and Littleton's always there to help us out. So I guess really Joe covered basically everything that really I wanted to say as well, but we truly do value the partnership we have with Littleton and see it as a win-win for both Trailmark and Lockheed Martin.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to council for questions of either the fire chief or the representatives from Lockheed. Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you. Question, thanks for coming down, guys, and you're absolutely right, Martin has been a great relationship with the city of Littleton. In fact, my father worked for Glen El Martin Baltimore, and that's when we all came out here, so it's a great relationship. I do have a couple of questions, and it may be for Tony. What are the number of employees that you're serving out there right now?
We have a little over 6,000.
Okay, so then, are you still at Deer Creek Canyon?
We are, but that's a separate facility.
And will this agreement also cover Deer Creek Canyon?
No, just Waterton Canyon.
So if they have an emergency issue out there...
They're actually a different business area. We're Space Systems Company at Waterton Canyon, and the Deer Creek facility is Information Systems and Global Solutions, two separate business areas. So West Metro Fire covers Deer Creek.
So West Metro, or even, I guess, where's the chief still here? I don't have my glasses. Oh, there he is over there. So I was looking for your head. So, and I presume then maybe, Chief, maybe when you get up later, you can tell me a little bit more about how that is served a little bit. Another question that I have is, do, now, currently you respond to brush fires and other fires that are right there outside the facility?
Yes.
Butterspoon Canyon, for instance?
Right, yeah, anything that's within the vicinity of our property.
Even outside into Waterton Canyon area?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cool. And that's a part of this agreement as well?
Yes.
That will continue, I mean, it's not going to go away? And then the equipment, the two trucks that we're be working with, what is the useful life remaining with those trucks? They look to be a bit old.
You know, I really don't have an exact answer for you, but they're well-maintained, regularly maintained, and I know the chief was actually probably going to assess the vehicles.
Maybe that's something, Chief, if you can keep that for me.
Jerry, would you go back to your previous question and ask that again?
What is the remaining useful life of the two fire trucks?
The one before that, the providing response to wildland fires outside of the plant location, wasn't that your question?
Waterton Canyon? That was a question, yes.
And you asked if that would continue under this agreement?
I did.
How are you going to respond to that if you don't have a fire department anymore?
Okay, I guess I misunderstood the question. Are you talking an actual response by Lockheed Martin to a fire outside of the confines of our property?
Currently, it's my understanding that Martin does assist when there's issues up Waterton Canyon.
Yes, right now we do. Right now we do. For instance, there was a fire back in 2010 at the firearms range that we have out there, and we assisted. and we assisted with that fire, even though part of it was, you know, outside of the confines of our property.
Okay, and maybe that's something, again, I wanted, Chief will come back to for me. Also, now, I know there's many unique materials out there, so the expertise in how to deal with those fires, again, maybe this is more for the chief again, because, again, I know you just don't throw water on every fire that's going on out there.
Right.
So, because it creates a problem. So, so we're going to have proper training there. Everybody will have the proper training there. The other area, Debbie, I hear, did I hear you laughing?
No.
I thought I heard you laughing.
I'm behaving.
Oh, you're behaving.
That was me laughing.
Oh, okay. And as far as clearances, when our, when the guys go out there and they're going into some of the areas to serve, to assist somebody down, and I know they're in maybe a top-secret area.
Right.
I presume right now, then, your fire guys are cleared one way or another to get in there?
They are. But let me use myself as an example. I'm still a Jefferson County Reserve Deputy, work closely with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office for instances where we've had an emergency where the deputies have actually had to enter a classified area. There's an NDA in place. Really, it's nothing more than just an NDA, and we worry about that after, I mean, life safety is the most important thing over a classified area.
And then, as far as equipment at your fire station now, will we still have equipment located out there?
Yeah, we will maintain a fire compliance unit. So we will still have, our facilities department will still have some of the wildland fire trucks used for hazmat and that sort of thing. So we will still have a few vehicles and a fire compliance unit, along with a fire marshal.
And the staff will be a part of this agreement?
Part of...
Part of the agreement between Martin and Littleton.
Yeah, I mean, we'll maintain, yeah, that's part of the agreement. We're going to maintain a fire compliance unit and have a fire marshal on site there.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional questions?
I have some for the chief, please.
Sure. Any questions for the chief? We have Councilmember Clark.
Thanks, Tony and Joe.
Phil. Yeah, I'm sorry?
No, he was...
No, it's just things. If the creation of Station 19 helps the entire system, everything that Littleton Fire Rescue responds to, then why isn't Highlands Ranch contributing to this, since they are part of that system that would supposedly benefit from this?
Well, we certainly would like them to partner with it. They've made a decision at this point in time that they don't feel that they're going to see any benefits from the station. My objective is to show them, once we collect the data and our response, to show them that there is a value, and it's on the table for us to come back and talk to them about partnering it with us when we can demonstrate that value to them.
So at this point, their assessment disagrees with your assessment?
Well, their assessment is based in theory. We're following a master plan that we all adopted and agreed on. I can't answer other than that why they would not participate.
Okay.
But they are open to the suggestion that if we can demonstrate response time improvements, that they would be willing to come on board.
Does the City of Littleton provide fire service to any area outside the city limits currently?
City limits, City of Littleton proper?
City of Littleton proper.
Yes, we do. Littleton Fire Protection District, as well as Highlands Ranch.
Okay. Does the City of Littleton by itself have an agreement with any area? Let me back up. Littleton Fire Protection District exists to provide fire service outside the city boundaries, both to the east and the west.
That would be correct.
And yet, we are proposing to enter into a contract with Martin Marietta. That contract is between the City of Littleton, sorry, Lockheed Martin, old habits die hard. We're proposing to enter into a contract with Lockheed Martin, the City of Littleton, not Littleton Fire Protection District, to provide fire service to Lockheed Martin. So that would be the only entity that the city itself has a direct contractual relationship to provide fire service to?
No, sir. So we're currently talking with Littleton Fire Protection District about the 30% of the calls that Station 19 would be closer to versus their district. They are currently struggling with response times on their west side. We monitor our response times on an annual basis and required to provide our fire partners a monthly report on what our response times are. Littleton Fire Protection District as a whole, we meet our contractual times. On the east side, they have the best times of any area we serve. On the west side of Littleton Fire Protection District, they have the worst times of any area we serve. They certainly see the benefit of this station, and that's why they're, we're having discussions with them about coming in in terms of capital investment upfront with the station, as well as one-third of the operating cost. So the partnership would be with Lockheed Martin, the City of Littleton, and the Littleton Fire Protection District.
And if I can jump in, Mayor, that they are, for, if I understood the question, Councilmember Clark, we have a contract with Highlands Ranch, and we have a contract with Littleton Fire Protection District, and we're proposing a contract with Lockheed Martin. Those are all done through, Littleton Fire Protection District is, exists solely to provide fire and medical response to their district, and they have chosen for the last 30-plus years to contract with the City of Littleton to provide that service.
Yeah, I, my question, apparently not making it clear. Let me try another avenue. If Littleton Fire Protection District were to assume the fire protection for Lockheed Martin, then Lockheed Martin would be paying them more than double what they're proposing to pay us?
I don't know what they would be paying them.
Well, it looks like, it looks like the assessed valuation, according to Douglas County Assessor, for Lockheed Martin is $80 million. So Littleton Fire Protection District's Mill Levy is 7.68. Littleton Fire Protection District recovers their costs. They get their revenue through a property tax. City of Littleton gets its revenue through sales tax and use tax and property tax. So if Lockheed Martin Plant, which is almost eight and a half square miles, has 6,000 employees, it has $80 million of assessed evaluation, if that were to be provided service to the Littleton Fire Protection District, then they'd be paying over $600,000 a year. We are proposing to have a contract with them where they pay us directly $300,000, less than half of that amount, to provide fire service. So why is this contract being arranged with the City of Littleton rather than them talking to Littleton Fire Protection District? They have the taxing authority and mechanism to recover the true cost that it takes to provide fire service. We don't, or at least we're not getting it through this contract. So, so the question is, is there any other geographical area outside the City of Littleton that Littleton is directly contracting the City of Littleton, not Littleton Fire Protection District, to provide fire service?
I'm sorry, I still don't follow your question. I can't answer the question as to what Lockheed Martin would pay Littleton Fire Protection District. Lockheed Martin is not in the Littleton Fire Protection District. In order for them to tax it, they'd have to annex them in.
Exactly.
Right. And Littleton Fire Protection District doesn't have a fire department to provide service. They would have to do it through us.
Exactly. So if...
So the answer is no to your question. We do not have any other direct contractual agreements to provide fire service, and you would have to ask the Lockheed Martin representatives why they chose not to go that route and call us.
So, I like Lockheed Martin. I worked there. I spent many happy days there and a couple unhappy days, but great company. It's had a longstanding relationship with the City of Littleton. There's many people here that were employees, or their families were employees. But what it appears to me is we have a proposed contract for $300,000 a year, and that doesn't even pay the salaries of the six firefighters that are proposed to come across. If it, Lockheed Martin is like 15 times the size of Trailmark. It's more than three, it's almost four times the assessed valuation of Trailmark. It costs a lot of money to provide fire service. If, if we were doing this in the standard way to any other company, they'd be going in outside the city limits, they would be annexing into Littleton Fire Protection District, and they would be paying 7.68 mils, which they aren't.
Mayor? I'm happy to address that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Clark, the short version is, we wouldn't do that because we provide the service right now for a much lower cost than that, and we could continue to do that. Any private entity could continue to do that. So what we're looking at here is that win-win, right? Where you get some, where the city benefits in some way and Lockheed Martin benefits. So here, we can provide essentially slightly better capability than we have now for about the same cost as we're paying right now. And what that does is, and it closes the gap between what the City of Littleton would need to provide service to Trailmark, as well as improve service to the rest of the area. So, yes, we wouldn't be paying as much as if we joined a taxing district that would, that no entity would do if they're already getting the same service for half the cost. So what we feel like here is that we are getting the same, a slightly better service for, for about the same cost or slightly less as we're paying now, but that enables the City of Littleton to maximize their dollars and closes that gap to build a station that you would not otherwise be able to do. So it truly is a partnership and a win-win here.
I recognize you guys are getting a great deal out of it, but unless your wages are substantially less than ours, you're getting, you're getting it for much less than what you're paying right now. I mean, our, the $300,000 won't even get to midpoint of entry-level firefighters for six firefighters, and you've got more than six. So, it, and I don't fault you for trying to get a great deal. What I fault us for is for going around the normal mechanism to provide fire service outside of the city limits, which would normally be Littleton Fire Protection District, agreeing to a contract that would be half of the rate that any other business would be paying, with, with an escalation clause that's less than one-third of what our historic inflation rate has been. I mean, it's a great deal for you, it's a terrible deal for the citizens of Littleton.
Well, Councilmember Clark, or Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Clark, I think it's a great deal for both of us. I do disagree with so much of the premise of everything. So, you say that we're getting a deal, we would be getting a deal better than any other entity would. No entity, no entity, no other business, no other private, no other government entity would pay more for a service that are already providing in-house for less. So I think this really is that, that gap of, of we're helping the city, it's a mutually beneficial agreement. Nobody here loses. You can talk about, you know, because the alternative from what you're describing is this, nothing, this would not happen. So then, the city would then be left with the choice of either keeping the status quo, which, which you may choose to do, and have not, and then have the, either pay West Metro or have the delayed response times to Trailmark, or you can do the deal, you can construct it on your own and not have private participation in the deal. So those are the alternatives, and I think that certainly it is a mutually beneficial for all of us to, to work on structuring an agreement, a mutually beneficial agreement, where, again, we get, both of us can improve services at a lower cost than we could do it in any other way.
I'd like to ask some other council members for some questions.
Jerry had...
Who had additional questions?
Jerry had those questions.
Jerry, you are going to address them.
Yeah, there's a question still on the table.
Okay. Ask them.
It's your, it's your time.
Chief, do you want, you ready to take them?
Absolutely.
Oh, cool. You didn't write them down?
I'm sorry?
You didn't write my questions down?
Well, you want to know about wildland response, right? So...
Where's the police chief right now? He would have written them down.
I couldn't say. Probably home watching on TV.
I'll go back over the, you're going to get six employees from Martin Marietta, is that correct?
Yes. So in our contract, we, in our talks with Lockheed Martin, preserving jobs for their people was a priority for not only us, but for them as well. And they have several firefighters that are there that would like to have the opportunity to work for a municipal fire department or a fire district. And we offered them the opportunity of giving them a chance to go through our interview process under certain circumstances. They have to meet certain requirements. They have to be firefighter one and EMT certified in order to go through our process, and that we would consider up to six of their employees. And the reason we kind of limited it at six is that we have a new standing practice of only hiring paramedics due to the call volume that we run in EMS. And their members are not paramedics, but we do budget to send some of our employees on an annual basis to school, and we need to outfit our truck and staff our truck with paramedics. So we have to be able to integrate just a handful of EMTs with the paramedics to deliver the service in the contract.
And then, another question, different question. Then, you're prepared also to be taking calls at Deer Creek Canyon facility?
Yeah, so about that, we would, in the contract, we're responsible for providing them the same level of service that we provide every other fire partner. We have a hazmat team, we have a wildland team, we have a tactical EMS team. If they were to have a wildland incident within their borders, we certainly would respond. Anything outside their borders, we would call for mutual aid if, or respond to a mutual aid request if it was in Deer Creek and that's in the jurisdiction of West Metro. We already have statewide agreements that they can call us and we'll go assist them.
Such as the Waterton Canyon type?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Do you answer that one? Then, then the remaining useful life of the vehicles?
So their vehicles are actually pretty unique. Although they have a few years on them, they're actually in very good visual condition and have very low mileage. I joke a little bit that they don't ever leave their plant, so they're like eight years old and they have 15 miles on them. But we have in the agreement the right to inspect those vehicles with our fleet maintenance supervisor at the time that we sign the contract, and then inspect them again at the time that we would take delivery of those vehicles to ensure they're in the same operating condition as when we first inspected them.
And they'll be located where?
I'm sorry?
Those two vehicles be located where?
So, looking at their fleet, we, you know, they had a lot of different vehicles available, but we wanted to make sure we were being prudent and only taking what we needed. So there's a fire engine apparatus, it's a squirt, that would actually be located at the Station 19 in the southwestern corridor. The other truck is actually a Type III brush truck. As you know, we have a wildland team. We do several deployments every year for wildland mitigation in various states, and we get reimbursed for our firefighters going there. If we have a Type III apparatus that we can send out with those teams, we have the ability to get reimbursed for that apparatus, so it can increase our revenue coming in, and that's why we're interested in that vehicle.
And do you anticipate putting a, one of the quick vehicles at Trailmark?
We don't initially, but it should be noted that our quick vehicles are dynamically staffed, meaning they rove our entire district under a system status management on an as-needed basis. So if that truck were busy on a serious call or out at training, we automatically move vehicles to that, that area for a quicker response.
And then my last question then, on the, or the last two questions, then, as far as the staff from Martin, they're trained with the unique materials out there, so, and, but they're not EMT, apparently, but so that's something I guess...
Yeah, so I don't know what level of training they have. They'll go through an academy with us, but we have a hazmat team with hazmat technicians and can respond to any incident in that location.
Then last but not least, the agreement mentions that there's a 2% increase annually?
That's correct.
Annually? And now, I was just trying to figure out some numbers. It doesn't look like it carries the, or covers the labor-related increases from year to year. Is that something you've put into your budget on this?
Well, we never cover the costs of our labor-related costs. So we're not a for-profit organization. We don't break even. We're very similar to the library or the museum. It costs money to, to open those types of things for our citizens. Fire protection and EMS services are not cheap, and I don't know a fire department in the country that breaks even on the revenue that they generate for the services they provide.
So you're proposing in the whole budget? Is that what you're doing?
Not in the whole budget, but certainly, City of Littleton and the Littleton Fire Protection District, and hopefully by next year, Highlands Ranch will come in and will pick up the costs, and the $300,000 with the escalating clause will help offset that.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
As well as Police Chief Stephen, in case he's listening.
Does council have any additional questions for the Fire Chief? What I'd like to do then is, Chief, we're going to have the public hearing, and then we'll see if we have some additional questions after that. So, opening the public hearing at 8:14, I have, this is item 6C, and I have a few signatures on D and E, so please help me if what you wanted to do was talk to this issue, you know, I'll work with you. Just because you didn't get your name on the list doesn't mean you can't talk, so...
A few people came in late.
Okay. Okay, and I'm told a few people came in at the end, so they may not be on here and wish to talk also. Also, if you're on the list, I'll ask you if you wish to talk, and some people choose not to, but would like to express their favor or disfavor for the project. The next one is Scott Walter. Would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
Please approach, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I wanted to express my thanks to the City Council, Chief Armstrong, Michael... Armstrong, Michael Penny, all the city staff, and all those who have made possible through their effort and foresight and prudence this proposal for Fire Station 19. For 16 years, the Trailmark community has faced the dark truth, and that is that their lives and their property are at increased risk. Despite worthy efforts to address this, geography, emergency response times, and cost have plagued resolution of this fundamental problem. I'm grateful for the support and cooperation of Lockheed Martin and for the forward-thinking strategy of the Littleton Fire Department, which now provides this unique opportunity to responsibly address this unsettled issue and posture the city to support the evolving needs of its community in the future. I think this is a win-win situation for Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karen O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm one of those older people that are getting to the age where a lot of things can happen, and I may need emergency service. And I would like to know that I could get it in time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Ree?
I choose not to speak.
Okay, and he has indicated a yes in favor of the project. Sandy Farish?
Sandy Farish.
Farish, Sandy Farish, please.
I choose not to speak.
She chooses not to speak, and she approves the project. Brandon Bowle? If you'd approach the podium and speak into the microphone, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Longtime resident out of Trailmark since we started. This has been in the works for a long time. Like to see it go through. I'd like to look my neighbors in the eye and let them know that their fire department's there. I'm one of those guys. I've been working here for 18 years. I'm proud to say I'm a Littleton firefighter. What I'm not proud of is to say that I can't protect my neighbors. Get this done. Make it happen. I'm a man of few words, but I'll leave you with this. Once old wise captain told me, doing the heart, doing the, doing the right thing is never easy. I know it's not easy to find the money, but this is the right thing. Let's get it done. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Chris, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris Dravas or Drouse?
Coming.
You have three minutes, sir, if you'd approach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for this opportunity. I guess what it boils down to is, do you support it or not? It's quite simple. I, I feel like you, Council, have a moral obligation to provide emergency services to me, my family, my community, equitable services that are on par with the rest of the city, and keeping in mind that we are Littleton citizens, we are not Trailmark residents. You either support this or you don't. First step is to support it, and then you find ways to implement it. You get around the legality of the impact fees. And again, you have a moral obligation. Support it, and then, and then it's your job to figure out how to implement it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Jeannie Erickson?
And you have three minutes. My name is Jeannie Erickson. Regarding the Lockheed Martin fire protection, I don't think it's Littleton's responsibility to provide fire and emergency medical services for a company of this magnitude. They should continue to provide these services for themselves. Also, a $300,000 a year contribution does not seem like enough money for Littleton to provide these services. But since there have been no study sessions addressing any of these items, how would I know? I am also concerned about the types of fires this company could have, and if our firefighters are trained in chemical-related fires, and the massive acreage that this company owns also concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Heineman? You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Joel Heineman. I'm the president of Littleton Firefighters Association. I rise to speak in favor of the station. This is something that we've been working for, for a long, long time. I know at least four of you have taken part of Fire Ops 101. I, I know you know how important time is, as Dr. Eby related earlier. As firefighters, we're the ones who deal with seeing a late response and not being able to meet our demands in, in getting there quick enough in order to provide care. It's the successes that keep us going. Some of the examples that Dr. Eby used, that's what, that's what keeps us going in this job. It's the failures that really weigh us down. We need this station, not just for Lockheed, not just for Trailmark, but for the entire area. Our system works in a series. When one station has to cover another station's district, it creates large holes. Every time we have to respond to the Wadsworth corridor into Trailmark into Lockheed, north of C-470 along Wadsworth, we use a resource. It leaves a hole in another district, and it's a domino effect. We need these, this resource. We've needed it for a long time. We've done a number of studies that suggested that we needed the resources, but we've never done the standard of coverage study that spelled it out. I would encourage you to vote in favor of this station, and I would like to go on record and thank the chief and his staff for the work they've done, as well as city's administration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lou Sullivan? And you'll have three minutes.
Lou Sullivan, District 1. I'm, think that there does need a fire station in that area. I have a daughter that lives in the Chatfield area, and I'm sure this would affect where she lives. My biggest concern is that if all of you guys understand the financing of this project, because when I look at it, I don't. So if you can, more power to you. I just want you to think very seriously before you vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Chadbourne? And you have three minutes.
Hi, Council. I'm Pam Chadbourne, still a block and a half from here. So, just let me check. This is for the Lockheed Martin contract. This is not for the fire station. Is that true?
That's, that's what we're discussing.
Thank you. So, I agree that the fire station needs to be there. My personal connection is my old high school teacher who has post-polio syndrome, one of the few people left, lives there, and he will need emergency care. I want us to protect Trailmark. There's no question that Jefferson County and Douglas County are going to expand. We need the station there. This is not a vote on the station, so don't be misled. This is a vote on a contract with Lockheed Martin, and I used to work there. And the facility, I can't believe, is only worth 80 million, but I would point out to you that there are national assets on site that are worth hundreds of millions of dollars. What is our liability if a national asset at the plant is damaged as a result of our failure to get there in time or a lack of training to deal with the situation? So these are spacecraft and launch vehicles, and folks, that is not a municipal responsibility. That is not a community engagement. This is far beyond what our city should undertake. Now, this can harm us, and as Councilmember Clark has pointed out, I'm sorry, but six firefighter salaries plus benefits add up to more than 300K. 2% per year is, for 15 years, is not appropriate. So the costs for operation here are inadequate. I brought a handout for you about misfeasance, folks. Municipal officials have an obligation not to harm us, but this proposal does. You haven't shown that it's going to fit into our budgets. In fact, I think there's enough information that suggests it would bust our budgets. In addition, the fire presentation had absolutely nothing about the technical ability to respond to the plant. There's lots of about innovation and partnership, which is fine, but what about the technical coverage? Not a word. So folks, I'm sorry, but the fire station is a good thing. Let's work on the partnership with the Fire Protection District and get Highlands Ranch engaged. That's the right way. Partnering with Lockheed Martin is not. There's no way we should support that organization or, or the federal assets that are there. That's not our job as taxpayers of Littleton. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Pam, can you wrap up, please? Thank you. That's the last name that I have on the list, but since we'd have the three items, I want to make sure that anyone who would like to involve three minutes of the public hearing on the contract with Lockheed, now would be the time to make yourself known so I can get you up to the podium.
Yes, sir. Sir, just step up to the podium. If you'd state your name and your address, and you'll
have three minutes.
My name's, my name's Bill Knickerbocker. I live in Trailmark. I live at 9871 South Flower Court. So I've not been involved in this much up to this point. I've just sort of been kind of informed, but things have kind of ratcheted up recently. And I went to the community meeting last night, and I really liked the information we got. So I just wanted to make a couple of points. As a citizen of Littleton, I can, I fully appreciate the perspective of the councilman who asked some questions about the contract. And I have some concerns about the contract as well, mostly around out clauses and how much notification they need to give the city and those kinds of things. But I think one point I would make too, and, and this is the math I was doing when I was listening to the presentation last night, which is that currently Lockheed, if I didn't get any of this wrong, is willing to subsidize 30, 20% of the operating cost for substantially less than 20% of the call volume, right? And maybe I got some of that wrong, but I think that's right, by, by at least a factor of two, I think. So maybe a little different math would be helpful. Speaking purely as a citizen, and I've lived in this community for five years, and shame on me for not knowing, when I signed all the contracts, I didn't know I was in Littleton until I moved in, and somebody told me I lived in Littleton, and I thought they were kidding me. That said, I love Littleton because I moved from Littleton to what I thought wasn't Littleton, but it is. What I'd like to see is a kind of shift in the way you think about this, that I'm a citizen just like everybody else that lives in Littleton. And sometimes we feel like bastard children out there, right? I don't really know how we got to be a part of Littleton, but we are. That's a fact. And according to statistics that I'm familiar with, and maybe the chief knows more about this, there's no normalized statistics around response times around the country, but there is an organization of fire chiefs that does gather data. And as I understand it, 12-second response times are considered abysmal.
12 minutes.
12 minutes.
You're still collecting all the same proportions of tax money from me, and presumably the city benefits from that. There's a little money out there. It's a nice community. Nobody's prorating my taxes. You're getting the same amount from me. I'm not getting the service I want. I'm not getting the service I deserve. So I think the focus ought to be, yes, we need a fire station soon. Let's figure out how to fund it. If the Lockheed thing doesn't work out, then the city just needs to cough it up. That's my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Real quick, how does the Tabor law work with a multi-year contract with Lockheed Martin?
Thank you. With that, I'm prepared to close the hearing. And let me get my papers straight here. At 8:00, 8:30? Does council have any additional questions? I'm also looking for a motion.
I do have a question.
Councilmember.
For the chief, please. So, chief, logistically then, where will the Lockheed Martin firefighters be located? Are we still going to have six at Lockheed, or are they going to be now over at a new station, should that be approved?
So if a new station is approved, we can only service Lockheed from a new station. So that's first and foremost. In order to provide that service, we would do it from a new station. In order to open a new station, we would need to hire 12 additional firefighters to staff one advanced life support fire engine, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Of those 12, we would offer the opportunity to go through our hiring process to six Lockheed Martin employees that would become City of Littleton employees in, in the fire department.
So, and will we have firefighters and emergency folks located on-site at Martin?
No, all the firefighters would be located at the new station and provide service to our entire response area.
So then your folks would, would head out to Martin, and if they need additional equipment right there, that, there would be equipment, it's, I think from what we were told earlier?
Well, they wouldn't need equipment. So we would respond to them, just like we do any other emergency, based on the, the call. If it's a chest pain, we might send an engine and a medic unit. If it's just a low-acuity call, we might just send one apparatus. But we would respond to them, just like we would respond anywhere else in our service area, similar to a house or another business.
And do we know, are most of the calls at, emergency calls at Martin, Lockheed Martin, are they mainly medical?
Yes. So, a majority of the calls that we run at Lockheed Martin are medical. They do have a staff on, on-site as well as a clinic. They handle most of their incidences in-house. As Joe and Tony alluded, they're going to continue to have a fire marshal and a response team out there that can mitigate some incidences. And really, the most important thing to bring up is the cost. We came up with a cost based on call volume. We're not here to make a profit. We want to give them a fair deal. We're charging them $300,000 for approximately 50 calls a year. The rest of the time, they're going to be responding to the Littleton Fire Protection District, the City of Littleton backing up our additional resources when necessary. There's no limitation to how we use that truck, or our staff, or that station outlined in the contract. They just want us to respond to their emergencies when they call.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
And Chief, were there any other questions that came up that you would like to reply to now that you have the chance?
I don't think so.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. The hazmat issue has come up several times, Chief, and are you, are you satisfied that you have the capability to handle any of the hazmat situations that we may be putting up into space next month?
Yes. So, as stated, they're going to have a fire marshal on scene. Part of our contract requires our crews to go out and do an annual site visit and a walkthrough with their fire marshal. They will have technical experts on scene. Our hazmat team is trained to respond to various types of incidences. We send them on chemical spills all the time now. If it's something that we don't have the ability to deal with, they would let us know that prior to our arrival, and we would have the ability to call for additional resources if necessary to help mitigate the incident.
Okay. And as a follow-up to that, have you inspected the plant?
We have done a walkthrough of the plant. It's a pretty big facility. But the fact that they're going to continue to have some people on-site that are trained, as well as the fire marshal and things of that nature, made us very comfortable in, in, in providing them the services that they're requesting.
And in your observations, are the fire suppression systems that they have built in appropriate to the materials they have out there?
I believe that their insurance companies would require it.
Okay. So I, would it be correct to say they'd have a water problem instead of a fire problem? I think I heard that quote somewhere.
That would probably be accurate.
Any additional questions?
Not to the chief, but I did want an answer to Carol's question about the multi-year contract in Tabor.
That is, that restriction has to do with payment obligations, and we are receiving payments from Lockheed. We're not, we don't, we're not signing on to make any multi-year payments.
Okay, I just wanted a public response. Thank you.
Well, at this time, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Clark?
I thought I heard you say, Chief, that you respond right now to 50 calls a year to Lockheed Martin. to Lockheed Martin.
Historically, they've been approximately 50 a year. That can change from year to year.
Okay. And that's with them having their own firefighters on-site?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So presumably, the call volume would actually go up a little bit since they don't have any or limited firefighters after this contract goes in place?
I don't think call volume is dictated by their ability to respond. They currently run 50 calls a year internally. We do just a handful of transports. We would pick up those 50 calls potentially from the new station.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move to approve on second reading the ordinance approving an agreement with Lockheed Martin Corporation for Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services, subject to and contingent upon adoption of Ordinance 106-2015 appropriating funds for construction of Fire Station 19.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Counselmember Clark?
Yes. Trailmark generates, first of all, everybody's concerned about the residents of all Littleton citizens and frankly, anybody that the Littleton Fire Rescue responds to. And Littleton Fire Rescue does a fantastic job responding. When the paramedics get there, I think they do a great job. Nobody's arguing with the ability or the function of Littleton Fire Rescue. What this really comes down to is the best way to address Trailmark's issue, who should pay for it and how much it should cost. So Trailmark has 36 calls a year. 12 of them are actual emergencies. If we're already running 50 calls to Lockheed Martin right now without assuming service for them, then whoever presented last night that this is 20% of the volume for more than 20%, 20% of the cost for less than 20% of the volume was fabricating figures. So what we have in front of us is a contract for us responding more into Lockheed Martin than we respond into Trailmark, and the cost for us is, or the revenue that they're providing us for responding to that is 20%, according to that figure. It's substantially less than, than what would be appropriate. It's less than what they would pay if they went to another fire district. And taking them on with a 50-year obligation prevents us from having any other alternatives to responding to Trailmark. So 36 calls for a station that's 1.5 million or 2 million, depending on which cost estimate that you believe in, is a very expensive response. Adding Lockheed Martin doesn't help the issue. It actually makes it worse because then we take on an obligation of something that's 60% of the entire size of the City of Littleton, 6,000 employees, $80 million, and the citizens of Littleton get to pay for it twice because we not only fund the operation of the fire station, but then the assessed value and the call volume that's currently used to distribute the costs of the fire operations amongst all three partners, that racial stays the same. So we get to pay for the assessed valuation of Trailmark as our percentage of the total cost of the fire operations while at the same time, we're paying for the cost of the station at Trailmark. So it's not an equitable situation. One of our partners obviously doesn't believe that this is going to help fire response in their area. They have refused to participate for years. So I see this contract as a lose for Littleton citizens, and what ends up happening is Littleton citizens end up subsidizing the cost, unfortunately, of some of the fire service to Lockheed Martin based on the formulas that we use for everybody else.
Counselmember Sernick?
My math is a little bit different than Counselmember Clark's. Currently, the property tax revenue generated from Trailmark is a little over $300,000 or about the same as a $300,000 contract, which has a kicker of an additional $100,000 for training on the front end plus an additional equipment contribution that comes at the front end for about, somewhere around half the calls. So that when looked at it on a call basis, and the chief can check my numbers at some point in time, but I think they're pretty close. We've been looking for how to increase capacity across the system and knowing that it is going to have some additional cost, and how do we do that at the most economical basis? This is, I believe, an innovative approach, working with private enterprise. And some of my recollection is that some of the firefighters out there also provide security services, and so that's some of the, some of the trade-off in looking at what Lockheed Martin's costs may have been for those six folks. So I think this is a pretty good deal as far as increasing the capacity. Increasing capacity does come at some cost, and I think we get a pretty good trade-off in system-wide response times being assisted in this. And I realize it's having some buy-in to understanding domino effects where you put a pebble in the system at some point in time, and you get great waves at that point in time that those waves actually reach out across the entire system. So I would urge support.
Any other comments? Counselmember Cole?
Yeah, I do have another question. What is the reason we wouldn't do a cost of living increase on the annual increase?
In our negotiations with Lockheed Martin, we didn't, just like we came up with the $300,000 for the approximate 50 calls that they would run, we felt that that was a fair value. We felt that a 2% annual increase would cover the cost of potentially increased calls and didn't feel it would be fair for them to bear the burden of cost of living increases for our entire staff. So it's kind of a shared responsibility.
Okay. I didn't understand, I heard what you said, but I didn't understand about cost of living for your entire staff. If we're dealing with a contract with them, and we've got so many employees that are servicing them, why wouldn't we want to be covering the costs that we pay for those employees?
Well, we don't cover all those costs under our current agreements. We have, this is a little bit different cooperation in our current agreements. Highlands Ranch builds their own stations. They partner with us on employees. They purchase their own apparatus. This is a contract specifically for service. We felt that a 2% annual increase, we cover the call volume, the $300,000 was, we came up with that number based on call volume. We didn't feel it was fair for them to bear the burden of employee increases by themselves. So part of that would cover the increased cost of call volume. It would be used towards annual increases in salary. The difference would come from the city and from the Littleton Fire Protection District.
It's still not quite persuading me on that piece of it, but thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from counsel? With that, I'd like to call for the vote. We have a motion in a second. Are you ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with Counselmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Okay. I'm going to use some of my discretion to take a 10-minute break. It's 8:44. We'll be back at 8:54.
Thank you.
Mayor, you want to hit the light?
Okay, folks, we're getting ready to get started again. If you please take your seats. We just are returning from a 10-minute break. We're back in session, and we're up to item D. I want to let the public know that we have a rule on council that we do not proceed past 10:00 PM without a vote of council approving us doing that. So we're about an hour away from having to make that kind of decision. Ordinance 106, on second reading, to amend ordinance number 95, series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill, for all municipal services for this fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016. We don't have a staff report this, a staff report on this, but we have, any questions perhaps could go to the city manager.
Point of order, or maybe that's not the right thing, but the budget that we have in front of us has specific items for loaning money from the capital projects to the impact fee fund. If we're not going to do the impact fees for the construction of the fire station, then that would affect the budget. So perhaps it would be better to move up the resolution for the impact fee. in front of the budget. Otherwise, what do we do, modify twice?
Right, yeah, so we had set it up so that the resolution approving the interfund loan would come before this item, and then we've moved it down to general business.
Yes.
And so we-
We messed up your plan.
So we could go ahead and have, and look at that resolution now. It's not a public hearing and approve that, or we could make this ordinance, or that portion of the ordinance, subject to approval of that interfund loan.
I don't have a problem with moving it. It's going to be, for clarity. It's going to move what was item six E into discussion at this time. That's a consent agenda item that was pulled and was placed later in the agenda. We could place it at this point in between some of our other business and discuss that issue and then see where we go from there.
Yep.
Okay. So based on the recommendation, and I'm basically the agenda setter, so I get, I guess, to do that, I want to go back to this was consent agenda item five E originally. It was a resolution to approve an eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar interfund loan from the capital projects fund to the facilities, police, and fire impact fee funds for the Station Nineteen construction project. And just for clarity again, it has been item E in the consent agenda. It was pulled. A suggestion was made to move it further along in the agenda, and now we're placing it to current business.
Okay.
It's Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Clark, you polled it?
Yes.
Would you like to discuss that?
Yes, I would. The, I think it's pretty clear that you cannot use impact fees to fix pre-existing conditions. Trailmark obviously was built before the impact fees were put in. I don't believe that we can use impact fees to address growth outside the city limits either. So the presentation that we had from the fire chief talked about this helping the entire system, including Highlands Ranch, even though Highlands Ranch apparently doesn't agree with that. He talked about the response into Chatfield and other areas. That's actually Littleton Fire Protection District that's not inside the city limits. So I'm hard-pressed to see how we can legally use impact fees that are supposed to address impacts that come directly from the growth that pays for the impact fees. First station that's, by our own testimony that we've heard, is going to address growth that happens outside the city limits. And part of the problem is that the basic problem with Trailmark is the geography. And if the response time stinks going from Station Sixteen, which is at the west side of the city, to Trailmark, then it's not going to get any better coming from the station at Trailmark to the city. So the idea that putting a station at Trailmark is going to benefit the city is pretty remote. The idea that it's, that it's addressing growth that's caused by the developments that are going to pay the impact fee stretches credibility. So I don't think we can use the impact fees for this.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Hopping.
Chief, I don't know if it, is it possible without a whole lot of effort to put your chart up that shows the flow of assets through the city? And I'm going to respectfully disagree with Councilman Clark. I'm sure that comes as a surprise to everybody. But the, because I think the, what we really get by adding assets at any point in the city is an an increase in tactical flexibility that, that flows throughout the whole system. And the chief, I believe, addressed that. If you look at where Trailmark is on the lower-left corner, it looks kind of like Italy, but I don't think the food's as good. When we have to draw, my, my look at this, and I'm an old Army guy, so I look at that and Chief, I'm not as familiar with the numbers. Is it fourteen and thirteen that would normally go to Trailmark?
Sixteen and thirteen.
Sixteen and thirteen? So those are the only two. If you look at almost any other station in that entire map, you can triangulate service into any part of the city, both in the city of Littleton and the parts of the Littleton Fire Protection District that are outside the city. We all have the, the responsibility to serve all our citizens. Trailmark is an outlier geographically. And, and that's a fact, and we deal with it. They're citizens, and I sure wouldn't want to have my fire service diminished to have response times at fifty percent longer than any other place in the city because we're afraid to use an impact fee to let assets flow. The impact fees are caused by, or the impact is caused by increasing density in other parts of the city. If we have Littleton Village go in, it causes more fire assets to flow toward Littleton Village, which cause more assets from the west side to flow toward Littleton Village to service it. And you have to pull, if, if they're out on a call at any one time, you're going to have to have that tactical flexibility to go into that hole. And you can't, you can't service it otherwise. Otherwise, you can get Trailmark isolated in a tactical sense. You can't get people there in time. And you're hosed, no pun intended. But we, I, the, the use of the impact fees, and I've, I've seen the state statute on it, and I've seen the way that, that you can read that, but it doesn't have to be an impact right across the street from you. An impact is an impact at our system with our citizens, and we have a responsibility to use creative financing mechanisms to get there. It's not even that creative. It's geared toward that kind of thing for long-term population growth. If, if the impacts fee issue bothers people a whole lot, rather than just beating it to a pulp, why don't we just take it out of the capital projects fund? We can do that. But this is, what else are we going to use impact fees for? This is caused by population growth. It's caused by increasing aging in our population, and a need to service people more often. And we need to quit screwing around with this. We've spent a lot of time on it tonight. Let's move on.
Councilmember Brinkman.
I think the some, some of the interpretations of impact fees is, I think they're being interpreted incorrectly. The impact fees are designed exactly and specifically for this purpose. It is a new facility. It is not going in and correcting or shoring up existing facilities. The, you know, we talk all the time about creating these master plans and these strategic plans. And here we've got a strategic plan that has been very specific about what we need to do and where we need to do it. We, when we annexed Trailmark, we designated a piece of property as a, as a fire station. We have sat here and listened to the community in Trailmark put up with our duct tape solutions for years. We have an opportunity to partner with a internationally well-recognized reputable partner. Thank goodness, they're a neighbor of ours that we've had a relationship for a very long time. We have the district. They're suffering from their call volume, or from their response calls. We've broken our relationship with West Metro. We have money from that. The opportunity, I got to tell you, you could talk about Littleton Village all you want, but we have got an awful lot of growth and development and change happening in the southwest corner. We're building three hundred and sixty-five apartments at County Line in Erickson. We're, we've built two hundred and forty apartments at Mineral and Black Canyon. We have a six-story hotel going in. We have a new event center. There's an awful lot that's going on, and there's one station responding to all of that right now. I watched Sixteen go into I can never remember the name. The Retirement Village.
Erickson.
Wingcrest. I watched them go in there all day long. Sixteen's in there, and there's a call at Trailmark. There we go. There we go. We impact the entire system again. When there's a wreck on Mineral and Santa Fe, and there's a call over to Wingcrest, you can see how it all does impact, hence the appropriate use of impact fees for this station. I think it's a, I think it is a brilliant way of keeping the cost down. We are not going into the taxpayers' dollars. We're not pulling money out of the general fund. We're not stealing from Peter to pay Paul. We're using the money exactly as it was intended to improve the community services based on community impact. So I'm with Bill. I think we've hashed through this enough. This is about providing a fire station to a community that needs it. We've created partnerships and relationships to help share the cost, and I think we should move on.
Councilmember Valdez.
Yes, when when Trailmark was being built, and it's certainly a part of, we say, keep saying Trailmark as though it's something not Littleton, but it most certainly is Littleton. They paid impact fees, did they not?
I don't think we had them then, Jerry.
They did not. One could, I mean, I wasn't around, obviously, but one could argue that the dedication of, of the land for the fire station was an equivalency of an impact fee. There was also a lot of land dedicated to the city for purposes of what is now the ponds that are out there and the parks in the open space. There was also land dedicated for a future school site. And so there was a lot of land dedicated, which in the equivalency of today would have been, you could think of as the equivalent of an impact fee. They dedicated land to government agencies for purposes of government uses.
So impact fees that have been paid by other areas do not have to be spent just on that area?
That is correct.
So it's where we spent it, it's what we spend it on is what counts?
Correct. And some of the state language and city attorney can speak in greater detail. Some of the languages that have been, has been discussed tonight is, deals not with the expenditure side of the equation, but how you actually calculate the impact fee, that you cannot include some of those deficiencies, those structural deficiencies in the calculation of creating what it is that I would charge you for that impact fee.
Right. And, and again, the bottom line on, the question really is, though, if, if we're collecting impact fees from, let's say, the northeast part of Littleton, it can be spent in the southwest part of Littleton.
Absolutely.
If it's an appropriate-
If the council chooses, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
We have a motion.
I'm going to make a motion.
Peggy.
So I respectfully disagree with some of what you said, but I support this facility, our building this facility. I do not understand why we have to have an issue about impact fees when it would seem to me that we have money otherwise to use.
You absolutely can. So, so when staff looked at this station and we looked at ways to fund it, we looked at the revenue streams and available funds that the city council has at its discretion. The capital fund has ample money. If, from a policy perspective, if the council chose to fund the station out of the capital fund, no issue. We also then looked at the impact fee, which are revenues that come in from development, developers paying their, their way into the system, if you will, and a developer can be a single-family home, as councils are aware, or a commercial development. Those funds go into restricted funds, whether it's the museum impact fee fund, the library, the facilities, et cetera, et cetera. Those fees, those expenditures, I'm sorry, those funds can only be used for new capital. This is a new capital expenditure, a fire station. So we thought, what better way to fund this station, which has obviously been a, a topic of conversation and consternation for decades, it sounds like? What better way to fund that station from a capital perspective than use it out of a restricted fund that you don't have the opportunity to spend on very many other things, therefore leaving the capital fund, which is fully at your discretion, because most of those dollars in the capital fund are transfers from our general operations fund into the capital fund minus the highway user trust fund, which has a dedicated stream. So essentially, it's the same as, think of it like the conservation trust. We try to spend out of the conservation trust first before we spend out of the capital fund, because you have limited uses that you can spend that conservation trust, and so you want to spend it. And I think that we have got, I don't think, I know we have gotten clarification from our city attorney that this is indeed an appropriate use of the impact fees. So the policy question for the council is not one of this is an illegal expenditure, because as you know, we would not bring you an illegal expenditure, but a policy question of do you want to spend it out of the impact fee to build this capital structure? Or do you want to spend it out of the impact fee? If I just said that twice, capital. Yes. That was a subliminal statement of where we think you should spend it from. Apologize.
Council members, I'm sorry.
If I can respond. So with all due respect to our city attorney, there are some difference, legal differences of opinion, I mean, differences of opinion from legal entities on that. I would just as soon not use the money out of the impact fee money so that we don't wind up with somebody taking this to some kind of vote of the citizens because of all this difference of opinion. So if we have money otherwise, then I really prefer to use that money in this instance rather than impact fee money. So that's, I'm just stating my view. There are some, I think, fair differences of opinion as there are on any topic, so.
Councilmember Seramanic.
Yes, I have one question, one statement, and unless the chair wants to speak on the issue, I think everyone else has had the opportunity, so I would have a motion as well. Simple question for our city attorney. Is this a conforming use of impact fees?
Yes, I think it's an appropriate use of impact fees. They are meant to be used for new capital facilities. We can't use them to repair or maintain or operate current facilities. But development pays under these impact fee funds, and it's to, it's to address impacts of new development in the city. And if you think about the fact that Trailmark dedicated a station site, that if they were to do that today, if they were developing today, we would likely request a credit for these facility impact fees based on the dedication of that site. So we essentially have been holding that site until we build a station, and, and I think we adopted the impact fees. Fire was very thoughtful and diligent and did a master plan evaluating the impacts of growth that we see coming in the city. And their professional opinion was that there were two sites where new stations could go, and that this was one of the sites. It wouldn't make sense to, to put a fire station right next to one of our largest developments, say, Littleton Village. That doesn't address the impacts of new development that's happening throughout the city. And I've probably gone on longer than, yes.
You could have just stopped it, yes.
Yes, okay. I know. A coaching moment.
Thank you. Next is my statement that supports where Councilmember Hopping was coming from with regard to the impact, and thank you, Chief, for the, for the chart that's there. We've had growth not just in, in residential, and I'm glad that Councilmember Brinkman mentioned about the hotel, but there's now five thousand jobs along Mineral between Santa Fe and Broadway that weren't there five years ago. And so when we start to take a look at where folks are in the city and what times of day they might be there, I know that this actually helps because I've looked at the standard of coverage that's there for my response, which, absent the station, actually is the same as what's in the southwest part of the state, our city, which is twelve minutes. So I'm looking forward to this. And then to finish up, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution approving a eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar interfund loan from the capital projects fund to the facilities, police, and fire impact fee funds for the Station Nineteen construction project, subject to and contingent upon adoption of ordinance one oh six, twenty fifteen, appropriating- of Ordinance 106-2015 appropriating funds for construction of Statement 19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are we ready for a vote? Please vote.
The vote is, the vote is five in favor with Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries five to two.
Okay. So this brings us back to, get my list of ordinances here. Item six. D.
D.
D. We're on six D. I had read it, but I, shall I read it again for the record? Okay. Ordinance 106 on second reading to amend ordinance number 95 series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016 and ending December 31, 2016. And we don't have a staff report. We can answer any questions that are necessary. Do we have any questions right now? I'd like to open the public hearing at 9:17. This is item six D, and I have two people who've signed up for it. Carol Briesiak, you have three minutes, please.
I think at this point, I'm thoroughly confused with what it is your, I couldn't find mine, anyway. As a citizen who pays attention, it appears that we have two councilmembers that acted outside of the council protocols. And we have a city manager that takes direction from two councilmembers. Or we have public business going on behind closed doors, which is a charter violation. Was there action taken by council to appoint Mr. Stallman and Ms. Brinkman to this two-person committee? When was the vote taken? What was the charge of this two-person committee? Did you receive updates over the past year that Mr. Penny said all this took place? Since when it became acceptable for two councilmembers to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract with Lockheed Martin, to hire an architect to design the project, to put out a bid for a construction contract? What happened to four, four votes being required to get things done? What else was done in the name of two councilmembers? It's hard to believe that we are ready to approve this very complex arrangement. It's frightening and also raises concerns about what this council might do in the future. If you let this situation pass tonight without a single word of concern over the process, you are letting the citizens down. If you share some of my concerns, please speak up. Citizens need to know that you too recognize there's something very wrong, and this is not the way to conduct business in Littleton. And if you rest is mute, you've already taken action. I would like to make a little comment, though I remember the consultant in that room over there talking about impact fees. And impact fees can be used for expansion. It doesn't have to be new construction. I have my minutes from that meeting. I also remember him talking about the parking lot at Bemis Library, how there was discussion about the shortage of parking there. And the parking, there was some talk about putting parking lot on the south lawn of Bemis. And the question was asked, can we use the impact fees for the library, for these new developments, to pay that parking lot? And the response was no, because the parking is an existing deficiency, just as if the fire station at Trailmark is a current deficiency, which impact fees are not to be used to fund.
Thank you, Lou Sullivan.
She left.
She's left. And that completes my list for this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, a motion?
Close.
Yeah, I've got to close the hearing at 9:20. Close the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve on second reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 95 series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016 and ending December 31, 2016.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm gonna make a comment. I'm incredibly confused as to what Ms. Briesiak was talking about. There's no illegal committee. I represent Trailmark, and I've met with the HOA of Trailmark. I've met with citizens of Trailmark. And I have done that over the number of years, specifically the last year or so. We've become very engaged in conversations. And some of that's related to community center and pool. And actually, it's probably been over the last couple of years. Councilmember Stallman has been the appointed liaison to the partner meetings with our fire partners and has served that responsibility for a number of years. On the occasion that we have a conversation with the city manager regarding Trailmark services or fire services, it's completely, it is completely legal. We're doing our responsibilities as representatives. And I, again, don't have a clue as to what the inferences are about, but I just wanted to set the record straight regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Clark.
Couple of weeks ago, when this came on first reading, I asked how much money the city had spent on the fire station so far and which line item that came from. Mr. Farman kindly provided that information in the communication. And the answer is that through the Fourth of December, the city spent $25,000 on the fire station so far. However, the line item that's provided doesn't exist. We approve a budget, a line item budget. It's published as a line item budget. That's what the council goes through. In that budget is also a list of capital projects that show each project individually. We've already spent money out of the 2015 budget on a fire station, money that was not appropriated. And once again, you can't do that. This is defined by the state as malfeasance. So we cannot spend money in 2015 on a fire station that has not been budgeted. And I'm hoping that we will correct that kind of behavior, and that will not happen again.
There's one thing I did want to mention this evening, and I think we just have the one more public hearing left on this. But is the overall Trailmark community has really reached out. The council has in front of them a packet that contains a petition with 163 citizens signed in favor. There were eight signed opposed. I have received emails throughout the last few days. Eighteen were in favor and two were opposed. And I just wanted to call that out. I think that the community has really, they've gone door to door. They've held events. They've requested more information. We've obliged that information. The chief and the Public Works Director, the city manager, myself, were out there yesterday having a conversation. They had more questions. And it's been a really, a very, I think, powerful opportunity for us to work very cohesively with the community. And I'm really proud of, I'm really happy to see all of those that were able to make it out. The weather definitely affected a lot of plans from folks in Trailmark to come here tonight. But I thought it was important to let people know the kind of support that's coming from that community for these votes this evening. Thank you.
Ready for a vote?
Want to repeat the motion just so we can?
Okay. Could, could somebody read that motion? I don't have it in front of me.
It is item six D on our agenda.
I just need to hear the exact motion.
And the motion was, I move to approve on second reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 95 series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016 and ending December 31, 2016.
Ready to vote?
Mayor, you didn't vote.
Oh, really?
He's the tiebreaker.
Got stuck there. Okay.
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no.
The motion carries six to one.
And that is my chair that hits that little button right there. That happens?
Oh, sure, the chair.
Okay, we're up to item E. This is ordinance 107 on second reading, aborting and approving a construction contract for Fire Station 19 with Golden Triangle Construction Incorporated. We don't have a staff report. Does council have any further questions?
I'd like to have this presented, please.
Mark Relf, he can present it?
Mr. Relf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Mark Relf, again, Public Works Director. Specifically, the construction approach here that staff is recommending is what we call a construction manager, general contractor, and specifically with a guaranteed maximum price. This is a different delivery method. It's actually a partnership that is recognized by state statute if we want to take this approach here, where we hire a general contractor, construction manager, CMGC for short, and work with the city as the owner, hiring a separate architect as we kind of design the project together. And at some point during the process, this is intended for the CMGC then to take the construction drawings and actually deliver to the city a guaranteed maximum price, for which then they are given a notice to proceed, assuming the city accepts that. And they build the project. And if the project comes in under that guaranteed maximum price, then the city actually receives the difference in the cost of that construction. If for some reason, the project exceeds the guaranteed maximum price, that's at the risk of the CMGC and not at the city. And specifically why staff is recommending this particular approach, I've actually built several different buildings in my career, two city halls. I've remodeled a convention center. I built a visitor and convention bureau. I built a fire station, all with this delivery system. Personally, I would never recommend to the city council that we ever do a traditional design, then bid, then build. The risk for change orders, when you use the CMGC approach, in my opinion and my experience, is minimized. The risk to the city and to our taxpayers is actually minimized. Buildings in particular are just very difficult to try to minimize the change orders. And I truly believe that this delivery system used throughout the country, the state, CDOT, multiple jurisdictions. In fact, as part of the requirement for the proposal, we ask that the sealed bids give to us their experience in the last five years. And I could read you a list from Golden Triangle, who've built a series of not only just fire stations, but governmental buildings from City of Denver, Loveland, Fort Collins. The list is extensive. Multiple school districts, fire districts. This delivery method, using specifically this delivery method. So it's very common today in the state of Colorado to use a CMGC with a guaranteed maximum price. And again, because it controls largely the risk to the city for change orders. We went through a, an advertised process. We received eight proposals, sealed bids. We had a, a series of staff that actually evaluated the bids. We had interviews. And as part of that, of course, price being a part of it, experience with a CMGC approach, obviously experienced building fire stations, all of this weighed in. And in the end, our recommendation to city council is to hire Golden Triangle Construction based on not only the best value, but it also happens to be the lowest price to the city. So that's, that's my recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Clark.
Has the building been designed and the contractor submitted a guaranteed maximum price?
The building is in process of being designed. It's actually gone through several different stages. Actually, we started with an architectural group and a separate contractor trying to get a rough kind of budget for this. And then we actually moved on to the actual advertising to select somebody based on what we believed was kind of a rough scope and a, and a cost estimate. We have not received a guaranteed maximum price. I would say we're probably at about the 60% to 70% design stage of the building itself.
So we're being asked to approve an ordinance that would approve a contract and set a guaranteed maximum price when we actually don't have a guaranteed maximum price from the contractor?
Actually, very specifically, the action that's being asked of city council is to approve a, a, a construction contract with a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed 2.2 million. And so if the council was to approve that, the next step then would be to finish the process, the design process with Golden Triangle, for which then they would eventually submit the guaranteed maximum price. And if it is below 2.2 million, then it would be, the city manager would issue the notice to proceed since it is below that threshold. I might, if I may, talk a little bit about how the guaranteed maximum price is actually achieved. This process, when we hire the CMGC, we upfront pay for certain fees, overhead and profit specifically, bonding costs. All of this is kind of agreed upon upfront. Then, when we get to a certain design level of the drawings, the CMGC actually goes out and solicits bids for all the different trades. Then all that information is brought back. It's all transparent. The city gets to see every single bid for every single trade. And so it's from that process then that working in partnership with them and the architect, they establish the subcontractors and ultimately tally up the guaranteed maximum price. So that's very different, obviously, than the traditional design, bid, build. If you take that approach, the city never sees the detail behind that. And upfront, we get to see the risk. We have a discussion about the risk with the subcontractors as well. And that's why staff is recommending this approach. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it sort of does. But since we've established a maximum price that we're willing to pay before the building's finished being designed, then we really don't know what the maximum price is.
I actually believe, based on the work that we've done to date, we have very high certainty that we can deliver a guaranteed maximum price to the city of 2.2 million or less. Otherwise, I would not stand up here and make the recommendation, to be honest.
But we just got done approving tonight an increase of 30% for a Riverside Downs project and increase of, I don't know what percent, for a road construction project, both of which had cost estimates that apparently turned out to be inaccurate.
Again, this approach is different. We're specifically asking council to approve a contract where it would not exceed 2.2 million. We have that much certainty in the process that we've taken it this far with the cost estimates. That's what's different.
Okay. I guess it's a matter of trust.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, if you have another question.
The contract with Golden Triangle is copyrighted.
Yes.
Which basically means the public can't see the contract. At least, that's the way that's been interpreted so far. So how do we contract with somebody that, where we have a contract that doesn't meet the Colorado Open Records Act?
May I, may I address that?
Please.
The Open Records Act requires the public to be allowed to inspect the records. And so I made the contract available for inspection during this period. And at any point after we sign the contract, it's available for inspection in the city clerk's office.
So they can come down and look at it, but they can't make a copy of it? They can't distribute it? So everybody that wants to look at the contract has to drive down to the city offices and inspect it?
That's our obligation under the act, yes.
Okay, so, so. No, never mind.
Councilman Hopping.
Do we know if Golden Triangle has televisions? I mean, my question is, if we allow 2.2 as a maximum bid, why would they come in any less than that after we've approved 2.2 as a maximum bid? What would incent them to come in at like 2,199? What?
Well, I think, again, it's because of the transparency of the process. We get to see all of their costs. So whatever the fees are that we agree upon upfront, some of them are based on a percentage of the construction cost or the construction contract. of the construction cost or the construction contract, some of them are a lump sum fee already established upfront. And so when they go out and actually solicit the bids for the trades, again, all of those costs, all of those bids are submitted to the CMGC and to the city. The city gets to see all of that. We get to see all the detail. Nothing is hidden from the city. And so that's why, that's why this methodology is used throughout the state, is that we get, in essence, we get to establish that guaranteed maximum price force with certainty. And so there is no hidden cost. It's all transparent.
I understand that there's no hidden cost, and I also understand that it's a really effective way to contract. I've seen it used before in other areas, and it's really, really effective, but still their estimates of labor can go up or whatever. It just, it seems to me like the cart may be before the horse in approving the maximum price before they've actually submitted a maximum price.
This is the process. This is the methodology used for this approach. And so when a subcontractor submits a price, in essence, that's the beginning of a contract. So once the city, you know, accepts that with a GMGC, that contract is established. There is no change in that. They're committed.
Well, then how did you get to the 2.2?
That's based on a kind of a series of estimates that we've done advance, plus a contingency. And so we've talked through the risk. In fact, I'll give you an example. Probably one of the largest risks we have with a building is the subgrade itself, the soil. And so we have done some soil investigation. So we know at this point that we're actually going to have to overexcavate underneath the foundation 15 feet. We've already identified the risk, we've identified the cost, we know what that cost is. And so we've, again, eliminated that from the equation. It provides more certainty when we add all this up, that the guaranteed maximum price will be no more than 2.2 million.
Okay, so you've already done all your soils testing, your site parameters and construction specs. Is that...
We have done a lot of investigation, and again, the process is kind of moving along here, so we're at about the 60% or 70% level roughly in the design of the building. And so we've already taken on the high-risk issues, soils being probably one of the larger ones. We've made allowances for other kinds of things that we've discovered during this process, one of which was that when we contacted the metro district that serves that area, they told us they had a series of service lines that aerate that reservoir that come right through the middle of our property without anisement. That in itself is another issue. But we've allocated, you know, cost within the estimate to make sure that we understand and we've, you know, identified the location of this, and we can manage that during the construction. So it's already included now as part of the estimate here to get to the 2.2.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions?
Comment.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Well, my comment is, I think this is brilliant. I think it is exactly the way to do this, and I am really happy to know that you have experience with this and that this particular contractor has experience with the fire stations. I think that you have done a great deal of due diligence on this, and I feel really comfortable with it. I think that the transparency of it is something that we haven't seen with other contractors, and you're right. It just, we have sat here before and had Public Works Director come down and say something went wrong and we need some more, and we need, you know, we need more money because of whatever. You will not be coming back down here and asking for more money on this. So I think it's, I think it's a smart way to do business, so congratulations on bringing this to us. Thank you.
Councilmember Cole.
So I agree, this is brilliant, but sometimes things happen. The Great Depression happened, Great Recession happened, in between some other things happened. So what, in all reality, if we had some god-awful, excuse me, thing happen, would we be back negotiating again?
Well, obviously, you never can eliminate all risk, and I think what's the advantage of this methodology is that it minimizes the risk more than any other construction approach, so...
So that's okay then, what you just said? So I just wanted us to acknowledge that potentially the bottom could fall out of things, but this is the best way that we can proceed to, given the various contingencies.
In my estimation, yes. You know, I wouldn't recommend it to the council otherwise. I just think based on the timeline of trying to construct something, certainly through the winter, and also trying to meet kind of a service demand here of getting this facility up and running as soon as possible, this delivery method, in my estimation, is by far the best.
Thank you.
I'd like to... Go ahead.
So we've done 60 to 70%, 60 to 70% of the building design, the site selection, the soil samples for $25,000?
That's the actual invoices that we received to date. That's not to say that, you know, more cost has actually transpired beyond that particular date as time has gone on.
So we've paid $25,000, but we've encumbered more than that?
Actually, we've encumbered quite a bit if you look at specifically just the architectural fee. Obviously, we can cut that contract off if council decided that they want to terminate this project and not proceed any further. So, you know, we don't obviously have to obligate ourselves to the full 200 and somewhat thousand that we had anticipated for the architectural fees.
So just as a guess, how much do you think we've encumbered ourselves so far?
If I, if the council decided they want to cut off the project today and we had to pay all of the bills, I would estimate we're probably in the neighborhood of about $85,000.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to...
The motion.
I need to open a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing.
Oh, go ahead, Jerry.
I may, please. Why would you not go with a sole source contract on this with different incentives? I mean, I've heard you say it's brilliant and all this stuff, but there's a lot of brilliant people on the other side of the Potomac too, but aren't so brilliant. Why would you not go sole source?
Sole source, meaning that you would pick somebody very specific that you wanted to build this thing?
With incentives and things?
Well, I think because in a large part, this particular process honors what our policies, our charter requires, a competitive process. And so, you know, I think, in fact, our state law, you know, allows for this kind of competitive process, and I can't remember the exact terminology in the state law, but this kind of partnership. So to go sole source, to be honest with you, I don't know if that's really to the city's advantage. I believe that this competitive process, which, believe me, a lot of contractors are in this, in this business specifically for CMGC and do nothing more, they do not do traditional design bid build anymore. The risk is too high for them. They don't want that approach.
And you said they were the lowest?
Pardon me?
They were the lowest?
Yes, correct.
So now we're telling them we'll spend up to 2.2 million?
Well, when I say the lowest, as part of the proposal, there were three areas for which they were to give us a cost proposal. The first one was a lump sum fee for what we call kind of the pre-construction services or the value engineering. That's a lump sum. That's the, that's the part of the service for which they partner with us and our architect to kind of value engineer as we design the process together. The second part is the actual overhead and profit. It's a percentage. It's a percentage of the construction contract total. The last piece is what we call general conditions, and that's for, you know, the cost of actually putting certain facilities on site to kind of manage the construction as time goes on, a construction trailer to heat the trailer, a fence around the perimeter for security, you know, kind of a list of issues. All of that is submitted to the, as part of the bid proposal with a lump sum, and that's paid in lump sum. And so when you add up all those three areas, and probably a fourth one is we ask them the cost of insurance. And so when I ask, you know, for liability, for builder's risk, and we add up all those percentages based on the construction contract, Golden Triangle was the lowest.
Thank you.
Okay, for a moment here, I'd like to do a public hearing, but also have 9:45. So I think we could pause for a moment, and I need to get a council agreement as to what we're going to do at 10 o'clock, since that's our policies. So council, I want to make a motion or a recommendation that we continue past 10 o'clock, but it's a motion that needs a second and a decision by council.
Second.
So is that for both of these items?
Well, we're gonna, I'd like to continue past 10 o'clock to continue with it, to complete our agenda.
Complete the agenda.
Complete our agenda.
Even if we go to 11:30?
I would, if you would like to make an amendment to reconsider at 10:45...
Yeah, we might do that.
Okay.
Do we just show a hand?
I just, I just need, I just need to show a hands. I don't think I need anything more than that. You all agree?
Okay.
You're good? You're good? Okay. We now have a public hearing? Thank you, Mark. Now we have a public hearing. It's item 6E. Those that have signed up have three minutes to speak if they would like to. Jeanie Erickson has signed up.
Good evening again, city council. Jeanie Erickson, District One. I believe study sessions were in order and still are for all of the Trailmark Fire Station discussions instead of everything being done in secret and away from public view. You do study sessions for what signs and garbage cans you think should be in downtown Littleton. Isn't a fire building, a fire station building as important as garbage can placements? There have been no study sessions on the topic of the fire station whatsoever, and I am deeply disappointed by this. A project as large and expensive and important as a fire station should have been addressed at study sessions, many of them, as far as I'm concerned, with all that is involved with this project, and it should have been in the city of Littleton's 2016 budget. Impact fees from other projects should not be used to build a fire station at Trailmark. I am not stating that a fire station is not, may not be needed in this area, but appropriation of impact fees is not how it should be built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy, is there a way to turn the volume down? Nothing personal, but holy mackerel.
You guys are lost tonight, too.
Thank you.
Brandon Bowle, would you like to speak? Brandon has chosen not to speak. He's indicated a yes. Lou Sullivan?
Gone.
Stu Maher. He says he doesn't want to speak, but he supports the project. Carolyn Bradish?
They left.
Carolyn, Bill left.
She's not here, but she supported the project. William Bradish is not here either, and he supported the project. That completes my list for item 6E. Please.
Carol Brezak in the 4th District, I just want to respond to the committee because it's the process that I'm having difficulty with. And I'm reading from the Independent, it says that Michael Penny said relative to the new fire station, quote, "Other council members have been on a committee looking for a plan, at a plan, for a year since an Independence Agency made a recommendation for a new station." So our city manager said there was a committee, and in asking who was on the committee, there's an email from the former mayor, said that the committee was made up of Brinkman and Stallman. That was the genesis of my comments. So if there wasn't a committee, then I would like somebody at some point to unravel this process, and I'd like to know if it's going to be a process that we can expect to be used in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to close the hearing at 9... Nope, I have another. Okay, I'd really appreciate if you'd sign these up, just makes it easier to manage.
I'd appreciate it if you would have public process on stuff like this, and I believe that's far more important than me signing up for the speaker's list for three minutes. Let me remind you that this is not your business, it is our business, and we, the public, have something to contribute in decisions like this. So we should have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, not later, Mr. Hopping, my district representative, because this is not your business, this is not for you to come here and make a vote, it is for you to consider what we have to contribute. I think what the citizens have said tonight about the fire station is very valuable, but you didn't have a chance to get it. The fire station, $85,000, was not in the 2015 budget, yet there was a recommendation a year ago that we consider it. Why not? Why wasn't there an amendment at the time to undertake these studies? This is important to the city. It certainly impacts us in terms of the way that this funds the fire station with the reappropriation of impact fees. You ask what else could be done with it? If impact fees can be used for the fire station, they could be used to mitigate traffic problems on Mineral and on downtown. We have a problem with east-west transport in the city that is exacerbated by growth anywhere, and I'll guarantee you that emergency vehicles are impacted by the lack of ability to get from east to west at rush hour. I guarantee you. Now, why can't you use impact fee for mitigating the traffic hazards that are building in Littleton? That's what they should be used for, not for the fire station. I do want to reflect my bitter disappointment in the process, the exclusion of the public, the lack of the funding transparency to the public, and also the way that you folks have set up the funding of this fire station. The fire station is good. Why did you hide it? We want it, but the way that we fund it and the process that you undertook matters. So I'm disappointed, council. Thanks for your thoughts.
Thank you. Close the hearing at 9:52.
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading, awarding and approving a construction contract for Fire Station 19 with Golden Triangle Construction, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Yeah.
I wanted to make a comment. Okay, I guess I won't make a comment.
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Was it just reiterating, or was it new information? It was reiterating. Next.
Okay, now we're up to item F. This is ordinance number 103 on second reading, amending section 641, 6475, and 9110 concerning aggressive begging and solicitation on or near streets or highways. The city attorney has a report for us.
No one wants to hang around to talk about aggressive begging?
They're going out to beg.
This is an ordinance to amend three sections of Title VI, Chapter IV concerning aggressive begging, bringing forward these ordinance changes to mitigate and reduce the potential liability that the city might face if the provisions are left in the code and enforced as written. This is in response to a district court case, Brown v. City of Grand Junction, where panhandling ordinance in Grand Junction, a number of the provisions in that ordinance were struck down as, for violating free speech. And so one of the carve-outs that the, or one of the, the court noted, that public safety is inappropriate, something that we can, can use our ordinance to restrict free speech if it's a public safety issue. So you'll see that the changes to the ordinance address public safety issues and are limited to that.
Council, do you have any questions?
Sir? How did we get this ordinance in the first place? Not this one, but the...
The original aggressive begging ordinance?
Yes.
I do not know the history of it.
Okay.
One of the options would be to simply strike the entire ordinance.
It seems to me like we already have disturbing the peace and harassment that takes care of the vast majority of this, plus we already have at least two different ordinances that prohibit people blocking the streets and the... So modifying this to address freedom of speech, it seems like the better thing to do is just get rid of it.
Absolutely, that would be an appropriate option as well. Absolutely, that would be an appropriate option as well. So, if Council's interested, I could also, I could bring back the ordinance on third reading, removing these provisions of code, if that's what Council direction would like.
Do we still need the 9110? Or could we get rid of that, too? Or do you want some time to think about it?
Yes, I would, that would be the portion that I would want to, to look at. So, that, I would ask that if, if that's the direction Council would like to take, that we go ahead and continue it until, I'll bring something back in January.
Okay, further comments?
Go ahead.
Phil, go ahead.
No, would you just go?
Respect my elders. Okay. Thank you, Bill. There are some solicitations that happen occasionally that are done through organizations like the firefighters will have their boots out, and what I'd like to understand is the impacts that we have to those things that are at least semi-sanctioned, that may take place in the streets, or do we want to be in a position where we're going to prohibit some of those that we might say are in the public interest?
Yeah, we can't do that. We can't discriminate or discern between the message that is, so the solicitation of our firefighters versus solicitation of Greenpeace versus solicitation of a homeless person or Girl Scouts. So, we, we can't, the firefighters should not be in the street with the boots.
Is there a way to deal with a permitting process that would provide for that? I'm just, I'm throwing out ideas more for consideration that would allow for something like that.
Anywhere where there would be discretion, and it has something to do with the content of the speech, would be impermissible.
But if it were somehow an organization as opposed to an individual?
It, it's the aggressive part that's the issue, right?
Right.
Right.
Well, it, but it's, but the ordinance also deals with the presence in some locations that's public space. So, it's not just the aggressiveness, it's dealing with any of the message that might be there.
I'm not sure I understand the question between, I, I'm sorry.
Well, the, really, the issue is, at this point, we have in front of us the ordinance that we have. You know, we need to decide to either move forward with it or table it to, to a third hearing, but, um...
No. No. Councilmember Hopping.
How much time would you need?
To bring back an alternate version? I could do that in January.
January.
Oh, January 19th?
19.
I would suggest that we are, do you have a public hearing? That you go ahead and have the public hearing, a public has, have, or hear?
Councilmember Hopping.
To Councilman Clark's point, if it's redundant to have it, I think it'd be wise to consolidate it, but we, the aggressive begging part kind of hits my eyes because we have had, I've seen on two or three occasions, a gentleman, not, well, he's termed gentleman, he's been hitting people outside the ATM over Pank One, and I even chased him to Light Rail once. I took pictures of him. They're really good. But, um, does, would this cover, does this ordinance cover that kind of aggressive begging where the one that Councilman Clark's referring to would not? And I don't know.
So, Councilmember Clark's point is that there are other ordinances that we have available that we could use besides this, and we have Division Chief Enley here, he could probably talk about this. Approaching someone at an ATM is, is not, I'm looking to see if it's illegal under our current ordinance, but it would not be something that would be illegal under our, under the ordinance I'm putting forward because there's no public safety concern that you're addressing.
But if he follows you aggressively?
Now, if they walk up and grab you at the ATM, then that, that would be a problem.
So, it's the definition of his aggressive physical, or is it?
Mm-hmm.
Menacing.
Following you or menacing or whatever?
Yes.
It sounds to me like we ought to bring this back.
Although, your, your element of public safety is, very often when someone's using an ATM machine, they're using a private PIN information, and it depends on your definition of what is safety.
That's theft.
Uh-huh.
So...
I will tell you that the Grand Junction ordinance specifically included a provision about soliciting within 20 feet of an ATM, and that was specifically struck down. So, I wouldn't recommend at all that we look at that sort of locational restriction.
How about process-wise, I open the hearing and then do the public hearing and then take a look at our motion and see what we have?
The Council can decide what they'd like to do.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. I have no one on the roster. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Yes.
I'm Pam Chadborne, living in District One, so I would like to urge you to bring this back. The criminalization of poverty is something in America that we should be ashamed by. There are other ways to handle aggression. Thank you very much for, Councilmember Clark, for pointing that out. That's the way to handle this. There may be a few people who solicit, who are aggressive and bad, and that needs to be handled by the police and the individual. But most people who are begging need to. They are in desperate straits, and I want to believe that my council will recognize that and protect it. I'd like to believe that our nation will address it also, but lacking that, tonight at least, bring it back, get rid of all of this except for the part that you think you might need, but otherwise, let's handle it by physical aggression, not by penalizing poverty and desperation. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. So, at this point, we're ready for a motion.
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, close the hearing at 10:02. So, we're ready for a motion. I think we're, I'm seeing a consensus that we want to bring it on to another date and really look at the wording and the issue and the necessity and really generate some discussion. So, I'm feeling that way. Phil, do you have a motion?
Yeah. I move that we not consider this this evening and table it until January 19.
Second. We have a motion in a second to bring this back to us on January 19.
And I have one other comment.
Comment?
Yes, to some of the speaker's points, would also like to include in the staff report what we do when the police or other safety officers are aware of someone in need and what we do with regard referring them to shelter or food so that they can, they can deal with that, and include that in the staff report, please, so we can be aware of it.
Okay, so, can clarify, I'll bring back recommendations on whether, which portions of the ordinance could be struck in its entirety, as well as looking at whether there's some sort of permitting system for organized entities that might meet constitutional muster, and then the information from the police on, just referring individuals on food and safety and shelter issues. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, so, we have the motion in second that will bring it back to us on January 19. Ready for a vote?
Yep.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
This brings us to item G. Ordinance 109 to approve a third amendment to the lease to 1221 West Mineral Avenue. Chief Armstrong has information for us, or perhaps the city manager does.
I think the fire chief got so excited.
God, he had this.
So, I think the, the memo speaks to itself, and we have no additional com, we've received no additional comments from public or council since first reading, and this is for the fire administration.
We have a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at 10:05, and do I have anyone that would like to speak to this? Close it at 10:05 and 30 seconds, and just to review the issue is, we're just out of space in this building, and the fire administration has to rent some space to do it, and they've done it at different times over the past few years. It was originally the inspections folks that were down there, and when you went to the one-stop shop, you brought them back, but had to move administration down there, and it's just a continuation of a current practice and to renew that lease. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading, approving a third amendment to the lease for 1221 West Mineral Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are you ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
So, this brings us up to item seven, which was general business. We now have no general business under that. We come to the third, the second period of public comment. I don't know if anybody's left to make a comment, but can you, can we get the sheet from up top and see if anybody has a, signed up?
I'm there, but I'm declining. I'm done talking, I'm too loud.
You were not. You were not.
I'm embarrassed.
I apologize.
I'll put, I'll go over the microphone.
It was the microphone.
Just while we have a pause, I'll tell you, we've had some problems with the sound, if you were listening on the web versus listening on TV versus in the chamber. One of our frequent listeners on the web said it was very hard to hear my microphone, but yet in here in the room, it was, seemed to be loud, and someone who had watched it on TV said it was plenty loud, so we're working on it.
You're a very soft speaker, though. I'm not.
Okay. Jeanie, Jeanie, you've chosen not to...
I've, I've chose not to speak.
Okay. Robin Swartzbacker, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Robin Swartzbacker, and I live in Oakbrook. So, the council's vision statement says to preserve a family-oriented and economically vibrant community that encourages citizen involvement. This evening, I'd like to focus on this aspect of the vision statement, encouraging citizen involvement. I've heard individuals on the council say they'd also desire more citizen participation. Council's protocols and standards of conduct reinforce this vision by stating council should make the public feel welcome. Well, I agree with you. So, I'm here to make a specific request that will enhance the opportunity for citizen involvement, and this is to have written meeting, written minutes of the meetings. We live in a technological world, and having meetings videotaped is great. Unfortunately, it's not practical for us to only have video recordings. Let me explain why this actually discourages citizen participation. The council and its board greatly affect how the people of Littleton live, as we can say from today's meeting. Our quality of life in this community is dependent upon the decisions made in this room, and the people have a right to easy access of what is said and done. Unfortunately, we don't have easy access to the meeting proceedings. We have access, but it's not easy access. We are busy people. We have jobs, friends, outside commitments, many volunteer, raising a family, and yes, sometimes we like to have some time to spend and have fun. Therefore, it's not reasonable to expect citizens to spend hours each week watching video recordings of council and board meetings if they want to stay abreast of what's happening with Littleton's government. We should instead have written meetings so we can read them in a timely manner and continue on with our day. Written minutes are also easy to reread, cross-reference, whereas videos are not. It's not only the huge time commitment that makes watching the videos counterproductive to citizen participation. As I spent three hours watching the city council study session last week, I was very frustrated because several times the audio feed went out. I missed entire statements that could change the understanding of the proceedings because the audio was silent. Having to slog through hours of video on a weekly basis to learn what the council and the boards are up to discourages citizen participation, which is contrary to the council's vision statement to encourage this involvement. Therefore, I ask the council to please provide us with written minutes of the meetings as a movement towards the goal of more citizen participation, and I ask this on a very personal note as someone who's newly involved and simply overwhelmed with the amount of time it takes to watch all these videos. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is Dave Mitchell here?
He was.
He was. And Pam Chantborne is signed up.
Pam Chadborne, District One. Sorry to extend the meeting by three minutes, but I want to respond to something that happened at the last regular meeting. So, I talked about street lighting, and the city manager said that we're going to look at the streetlights downtown and put caps on them, and I want to respond to that. Caps don't solve the problem of glare. The acorn luminaires that we have downtown glare out to the sides, and they glare out far to the sides. In my house, I get lights from street, I get light that light up my house, come in the windows, light up my house at night, from streetlights that are 500 meters away, two of them. Why? That's wasted money. I don't want the light in my house. That's called light trespass. Now, glare interference is also a problem, and in case of crime, glare interference with vision is bad. It shields the criminal, and it exposes me. I, I was in a situation like this just a few days ago, where there was a bright light and a big shadow below. Glare lighting is bad. These, these acorn luminaires never should have been selected for street lighting downtown. They were originally for the bridge over Santa Fe, and I have to think they're wrong for that, too. But let's not throw good money after bad. Let's replace the streetlights downtown with a candy cane model. There's a ton of different selections. We can get historic ones, we can get ones that look beautiful, but they're full cutoff and downward directed. It will save us money. It will be safer. It will look better. When you say you want to make the city more vibrant, it will do that, I guarantee you. Glare puts people off. So, please, don't settle for putting caps on the acorn luminaires downtown. Let's handle the problem by making a plan to replace for a year, whatever it takes, but let's replace them with downward directed, full cutoff. That's what we need for the next 60 years, folks, not a patch, a Band-Aid on top of them. So, and finally, since I have 25 seconds left, I totally agree with what Robin said, and you know that I spoke against the cutting out of written minutes. I'm not sure you folks have ever put in a searchable capability on videos, although you promised it. We need written minutes. It's the appropriate thing to do. We're still the only city who does it. Come on, let's get them back. Thanks.
Anyone else, just to make sure? Okay. So, we're up to the city manager's comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I see it's 10:13. One, one comment I want to make is related to expenditure of funds, and I want to point out that we have a resolution. It's resolution number four. I believe we've communicated this to the council from 2007, which authorizes city manager and the finance director to transfer any unencumbered appropriation balance or portion thereof from one classification of expenditure to another within the same department, up to $100,000 per transaction, and over that would require council approval. And so, there is no, Councilmember Clark used the word malfeasance, and I would point out that myself and my staff operate under the ICMA Code of Ethics, and we take our jobs very seriously. Finance Director Farman is, I think you all are aware, when he was originally hired, had to clean up what we probably really would use the term malfeasance for, where we had massive problems within the finance department, and he's very proud of the role that he plays in ma, making sure that we are appropriating funds appropriately and expending funds appropriately, and he is, one of his primary duties is to ensure that we do that, as well as obviously predict how much revenue we're going to get in so we can appropriately project how much money we want to propose to spend to you. So, I just want to point that out and just remind the council, and we do have the ICMA Code of Ethics posted up here, just as the council has our goals and objectives, and our staff take this very seriously. All right, moving on to more managers' minute items. We had a good storm overnight, and I thought our crews did a great job. We deployed them at midnight, and they were making rounds and were continuing to make rounds when we entered this chamber this evening. Holidays Eve was Sunday night at the Littleton Museum, and we sold more than 930 tickets, and everyone had a good time that participated in that. We have, and for those of you who have been following this for many years, we've got We have, and for those of you who have been following this for many years, we've got a contract issued for the restoration of the Solar III sculpture to Smith Art Conservation of California. I know it's long overdue for many of you getting Solar III fixed. This project will start in the spring of 2016 and include a complete restoration of all three components in the sculpture. And if you're not aware, Solar III was the first piece of public art acquired by the Fine Arts Board back in 1975, so, and I think it's needed restoration soon thereafter, but from what I'm told. We are participating, Littleton Fire Rescue, South Metro Fire, Castle Rock Fire, and Larkspur are the first emergency medical service agencies to participate in a pilot program with Centura Health to study the reconciliation of medication for patients transported to Centura facilities. The research from this facility will be present, from the study, excuse me, will be presented at the EMS Today Conference in February in Baltimore. A reminder, and many of you might be saying this as well, the city clerk's office is accepting applications online for citizens interested in serving on board or commission until January 31st. So we have about a month and a half still. And for time, I'm going to jump to the last one, so bear with me here. I'm going to read a letter that we received. We received a letter from Arapahoe Santa Claus Shop that I think sums up the spirit of the holidays. The letter said, "The shop lost her home after 24 years at the CSU Extension Arapahoe County Facility when it was sold. Little did we know, it would be so difficult to find space we needed when we set out early, out in early spring to seek another location for our shop. For nine months, we searched with the help of many people. It was indeed a learning experience. The success we experienced would not have been possible if we had not had the support of the city of Littleton. A mass email from the city regarding our need for space was broadcast to all Littleton businesses through our Economic Development Department. This call was answered by Margie Munez, the general manager of Aspen Grove. She very generously provided us rent-free with a space for one month to collect and sort our toys. This was the only viable offer we received. If we had not received it, we would not have been able to continue with the shop. This was our 56th year providing toys for children of Littleton, Sheridan, and Inglewood, and our first year in a new home. We provided toys to the parents of 1,300 children on December 1, 2, and 3, despite our multiple process changes. The Arapahoe Santa Claus Shop board members and volunteers, thank you for your contribution. From our staff to all of yours, we wish you all a happy and prosperous New Year." And I would say that is the same from your staff as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's do council reports. Councilmember Hopping.
Just a few things. I agree with a lot of the comments tonight that when we have issues that come up that are significant, that we ought to try to get study sessions on them. I'd really like the opportunity to, to know more about them in advance, and if it's significant to really vet some of the issues, so I encourage that.
I hear you and agree.
Thank you. I, I have to be very careful because I've done a fair amount of expert witness work in my life, and I've always been cautioned that when you make a legal opinion, you should make sure that people know you're not an attorney. We have one attorney in the room. We've had numerous people tonight expressing legal opinions with great authority, both from the audience and from the dice, and I think we need to be very careful about that. And it doesn't take legal training to know that murder is illegal. I mean, you can, we, there are certain boundaries of it, but if people are going to make interpretations of the law, they need to make sure that they are not representing themselves as an attorney. There is a charge called impersonating an attorney. I'm not an attorney, but I've heard that that's a charge, and I just think we need to be careful with that, and our city attorney is the authority for us. Lastly, Sugar Rush on Main Street is closing at the end of the month, 31st of December, and I think it's a huge loss. Lola bought and renovated that building into a marvelous fantasy land for all of us, kids of all ages, and it's going to be a loss to the community. Lola is going on to represent her foundation. This is not a closure because of a lack of business, and anybody who's ever been there and seen the crowds and the excitement on kids' faces and everything know what Sugar Rush means to all of us. So Lola, we'll miss you, and we'll miss all of your sugar babes. That's all I have.
Councilmember Serenick.
Yes. For those of you that didn't necessarily cross Main Street on your way here tonight, it looked tremendously magical with the snow coming down, so no comment on the condition of the street, though. The.
NFA.
The Dr. Cog Award Celebration, for those of you that want to put it on their, on their calendar, is, is April 27th this year. They're also taking submissions for the various different regional accomplishments and collaboration awards, so maybe the city staff wants to put something in there. Last Tuesday, Councilmember Cole and I attended building, one of the Building a Better Colorado Sessions at the South Metro Denver Chamber, and it was, it was interesting, and I know we've received additional information for another one that's going to be held in the area, but it dealt with the citizen initiative process in the state, also the primary system in the state, and the third area is dealing with the fiscal policy and the entanglements that are, are there. So if you want some thoughts on it, I, I still think it's a very ambitious project for any one of those, let alone all three of them to be taken up. And then a week ago yesterday was the University of Colorado 2016 Business Economic Outlook Presentation. I've provided the city manager with a copy of, a hard copy, but it's also available on, online for those. And Mr. Welbourn will also be at the Economic Forecast Breakfast that the chamber is putting on on January 15th, if I have that date correct, I think. What was hit very hard this year at that is a, is a, is a note on workforce preparation, workforce encouragement, workforce training, particularly focused on having our next generation of folks not only technically prepared, but certainly competent in these, in these areas. I'm excited to report that the first hurdle in getting to a fifth-grade bike program with Littleton Public Schools, the Title I schools that include Field, East, and Centennial, has been reached and is, and is being moved forward. Project Recycle, which is an organization I work with, also provides some bikes to the Arapahoe County Santa Shop Program, so very good. And council, just wanted to let you know that the motto gung ho that's on the bottle that you may have received this evening, gung ho is Mandarin Chinese. It's an modification of it, but it's Mandarin Chinese for working together. So Merry Christmas. Have a good evening.
No, I can't outdo the manager's five-minute, one-minute spiel, so thank you.
Councilmember Cole.
Just quick follow-up on the holiday eve. With all those 900 tickets, apparently quite a few of those folks showed up right away, but when I was there volunteering, by 8 o'clock, we'd run out of food. There also was no ride because they anticipated too much mud and didn't want to risk the mules pulling the wagons, but everybody who was there had, seemed to be having a great time. And it was really interesting, quite a few folks from out of the city came, because I was serving cider, and I kept asking people where they were from, and really good, good PR for Littleton. Thank you.
Addressing the issue that you brought up, the charter says, and the resolution says that the city manager could transfer unexpended appropriation from one category expense to another within the same department or budget or fund. We budget at the line item level, especially in the capital projects fund. What happened was money was expended out of the 2015 budget for a line item that did not exist. The line item that Mr. Furman gave us is not in either the 2015 budget or the 2016 budget. So you have the authority, up to $100,000, to transfer unused, unexpended appropriations from one already appropriated line item to another already appropriated line item, which means, for example, if the $300,000 overage on the Riverside Downs had been $100,000 and you had an extra $100,000 in a project, you could transfer that to cover that. That does not mean that you can create a brand-new line item on your own and spend money from it. That is beyond what your authority is, and it gets us into exactly the situation that we had, where we've encumbered up to $85,000 on a fire station before the council ever officially voted to approve the fire station. So, and, and I think we need to be very careful on how we spend and appropriate, appropriate the money. Doug Furman does an outstanding job. His finance department is very competent. My experience has been with them that they very rarely make mistakes, and he's very dedicated, but that doesn't change the fact that we cannot just create new projects, or more specifically, the staff cannot create brand-new projects and spend money on brand-new projects before that has come before the council and officially been appropriated by the council.
Mayor Protem Brinkman, please.
I just have one item. The South Flot Working Group had the opportunity to meet with the new Colonel of the Army Corps of Engineers from the Omaha Branch, which was really key and important because anything that we want to do in, and frankly, along the river, has to be approved through the Army Corps. And so the working group has a number of projects that we're doing, and one of them was our Riverside Down project, which we wanted to create a river experience there, which we got kind of in Army Corps waiting line, and as we were talking about it that day, the Colonel said, "Oh, that kind of thing? You can go ahead with that." So he had a conversation then consequently after the meeting with all the brainiac engineers from Urban Drainage and Flood Control, who are the ones who really are our coordinators and liaisons with the Corps. And I think that they're going, he is definitely going to make things easier for us, particularly with the work we need to do at Reynolds Landing. We've got about $4 million worth of river work there that, over a period of four years. So that was really good news. He comes with a river restoration experience and has a lot of experience in the West. So it's nice to have someone who, as he said, "I get it. I get you guys." So that was great. It was a great meeting, and I think we'll see some things move a little bit faster going forward. That's all I have.
I don't have any report. I just want to thank council for all their hard work and wish them happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
Merry Christmas.
See you next year.
Merry Christmas.